All right, folks, I apologize for running behind. Do we have an adoption of the agenda? Are there any changes? Glory be. No changes to the agenda? Are you sure?
Absolutely.
All right, do we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Second?
Second.
You got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the boards have a few things to report this evening. So one, a happy early birthday is in order for Mr. Fairchild coming up here.
I didn't know.
Just wanted to remind you just in case.
Okay.
Also, we've got just some staff updates. We got a new building services worker, one Betty Patterson came here. Is working in the facilities department. She started with the county on May 23rd. Happy to have her with the county with her experience in other areas. She came from the women's correctional facility. So we're happy to have her working here for the county. Also, so the carnival, the May carnival that was held from May 11th to the 14th. Unfortunately, they encountered some rain on the evening of Friday, the May 13th on Friday, and then a good portion of the morning on May 14th on Saturday. So that limited their hours a little bit, where they're only open on Saturday from 1:00 PM to 7:30. This screen here just kind of shows just kind of a breakdown of kind of how some of the revenues and expenses are. So these are, the red are really expenses that the county incurred for putting on the carnival. And down below here is a breakdown of the revenue broken up between the carnival vendor and the county. So the long and short of it is expenses were $4,800 to the county, revenues for the county were $5,700. So it was about a net wash, but a good time for a lot of kids that were going around the Ferris wheel and all those other rides until they got sick. So, but again, like I said, you know, whenever we don't have rain, it's always a really popular event. And like I said, you know, happy to have them back and do it again. Also, for Parks and Rec, they're doing adult kayaking on Lake Monticello. So a program was held on May 20th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, kind of a sunset paddle a little bit. They had 12 participants with wait lists of five. Age range was 54 to seven years of age. They started at Beach Four, paddled the Beach Three and back. There's an upcoming adult kayak float on the Rivanna River, Saturday, June 11th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Costs is $25 and you just need to pre-register in advance. They currently have six spots available. And we've got a couple ribbon cuttings for businesses coming up this Saturday, June 4th. So we have a new business, Bump to Baby, that they're opening up. The schmeck right up there on 250, right in the, do you remember what the complex is called? It's kind of the business park that almost looks like townhomes almost.
Zion Station, is that what that?
It's not Zion Station.
It used to be the modular home.
Yes, yeah, the model, the model home, the old model home place. So that's where the business is. So it's going to be 10:00 AM this Saturday at 5570 Richmond Road. Also on Saturday, June 4th, at 1:00 PM, Flavanna County Firearms is the business that opened up down in the Fork Union District, right there on Route 6. They're at 6672 James Madison Highway. So a couple ribbon cuttings for both of those businesses on Saturday. And just some upcoming meetings, June 15th, we have a regular.
I will be here then.
June 15th, okay. June 15th, we have a 7:00 PM regular meeting, which will be here at the library. June, we only have one meeting for July, which will be July 6th. So we'll have a 5:00 PM regular meeting and then a 7:00 PM meeting as well, which we will be able to hold any public hearings or anything at that time. And again, that July 6th meeting will be here in the library. And then back on August 3rd, we'll have a 5:00 PM regular meeting. We'll be back to the Performing Arts Center at that point. Happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any questions? Thank you very much, and I apologize for interrupting you, but I just wanted to make sure y'all knew that that was the meeting I will be going. All righty, now we will open up the first round of public comment. Anyone wish to address the board? Please step to the podium, state your name and address. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Is there anybody online? Okay, I will now close the first round of public comments. There are no public hearings. We will now move forward with the action matter. Flavanna County Arts Council Memorandum of Understanding, Ms. Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here I am again.
Why did you not bring it up that other topic?
I know, and this one's good for 10 years also. So somebody else can deal with it in 10 years. So tonight, I am happy to finally get this in front of you, memorandum of agreement between the county of Flavanna and the Flavanna County Arts Council. I think we've talked about this quite a lot. I'm not sure we need to go through it with fine tooth comb, but let me hit the highlights. There has been an agreement in place with the Arts Council, at least since 1996, probably prior to that. But at least there's a written agreement, written and signed agreement. Again, updated in 1999 and in 2008, the board passed a resolution on the use of Carriero Brook at that time. And then in March, a month later, they actually adopted a policy for the use, a resolution and a policy. And then a little bit, a little bit deeper agreement where the Arts Council provided an inventory. So it was very clear separation of who owned what and had added to the beauty of the place. In 18, there was a policy format, but no substantive changes to the policy. So there had been quite a while since there had been any changes to the agreement that was in place on how to use or who was responsible for what for this policy. So today I am bringing before you the draft memorandum of agreement for your consideration. And I really don't want to look at it again for a very long time. Just as a reminder for anybody who might have known, that says 94. So see that I can't even get my dates right. So 94, 96 is when that agreement was in place, last updated in 2008. The Arts Council came to the county at least a year ago, probably more like two, but COVID has robbed me of knowing what years are which. Wanting to assume more control over the scheduling of the space as well as expanding their offerings of art. And then COVID, April of 2020, the Circuit Court closed to any nonjudicial happening. So we lost our place for the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission to meet. We moved over to the Morris Room until COVID restrictions on the number of people who can meet in the space forced us out of the Morris Room, and we moved here from May of 2020 until September of 2021. In September, the library very much needed to have their book sale again. They'd not been able to have it through COVID. It is a big revenue maker for the library. So we really wanted them to be able to have that. So we moved again in October of 2021. At the same time, there were Planning Commission public hearings and Board public hearings that had generated a lot of public interest, and this was not a large enough space anyway. So we moved again, and this time we moved over to the Performing Arts Center. The Arts Council had canceled all of their in-person offerings because of COVID. And so it seemed like a good fit at the time. It quickly became apparent that we were going to have to figure out a way to share that space. And so here we have done the wrangling and the wrestling, and I bring to you today two problems to be solved. Board supervisors and the Planning Commission needed a long-term meeting space, and the Flavanna County Arts Council needed an available space to offer their, for their offerings to the community. This proposed MOA offers a compromise agreement to share the space and a management for the space for the community art offerings. So this is the last slide. What I wanted to show was there was some discussion about the budget season. We sort of, that part got missed a little bit when we were putting this together. And there was some concern that we were, after we had wrangled and wrestled and come up to a compromise, that all of a sudden there was this new stumbling block. So this demonstrates the availability during budget season, so from February through the end of April. And it really only impacted one additional week. Otherwise, it's our regular schedule. So that's the most that the Performing Arts Center would not be available. And then June and July, it will be completely available to the Arts Council. I am mostly happy to answer any questions you may have.
And Sharon Harris.
And Ms. Harris is on as well.
Is on too. If you want Ms. Harris to provide any comments.
Either of you.
This is a draft, but you're starting to act.
Well, it's draft only because you haven't acted on it yet. It is ready for you to act on it.
Okay, I wish I had. This is my fault. I wish I hadn't seen the first one that you did, the last one that you had, 208. Um, because it said there's plenty more control, and I was trying to figure out what was it that they couldn't do in the 208 one.
If there were any outside organization, and so maybe it's a misnumbered to say that. So all activities went through the Director of the Parks and Recreation to schedule the space. The Arts Council wanted to be able to schedule the acts themselves rather than having to go through. So that happened. We don't really anticipate there will be outside organizations who are using the space. And that is contemplated in this agreement with insurances and all of that. So that piece of it has been included now. So they will be the booking agent for that space now.
And the other question I had was, why did we have to go and have a lawyer draw this agreement? Why couldn't the administration and the council, why couldn't they come up with that?
All of our agreements, all of our agreements go through the attorney, county attorneys.
Memorandum of Understanding for law, because it's one in 2008, that was a law agreement?
I assume so. Without looking at it right now, I can't tell you that for certain, but it is standard practice now that all of our MOAs, MOUs, anything contractual goes through the county attorney's office.
Okay, so the one with the AARC, they went through the law.
The ARC building that we did.
Ah, yes, I'm sure. Yeah, yeah.
The one where we did, wanted to do the work, absolutely.
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, when we did the memorandum of understanding for that, yeah, that I am certain that went through the county attorney's office back at that point.
I just had some problems with, excuse my voice, I had some problems with 10 years. I had some problems with parking, where to park, and that it couldn't park. And it was a lot of really regulation. It sounded as if the AARC was a business, was another company coming from somewhere else. It just didn't sound like we, it was us working with our citizens.
Arts Council.
I'm sorry, with the arts camps. It just was so formal and so.
Well, I guess the.
Lost some, lost some love for me.
You know, I mean, you know, we worked a lot with Ms. Sharon Harris. And, and you know, I think it just really clarifies who's responsible for what. And again, it was not meant to be an us against them, that you can't do this. But, but again, it certainly, it certainly clarifies that, you know, we have a need for space at certain times. And, and really mostly, it's available, it's available to them with the exception of some of those, you know, you know, Wednesday and Thursdays.
Thirty days a year.
Yeah. So I understand what you're saying, Ms. Booker. But again, any type of agreement, memorandums of understanding, memorands of agreement, those do go through the county attorney's office. There are generally requirements from, you know, insurance requirements, other legal, legal language that just needs to be in there to protect the county. And, and it's not that we, we think that the Arts Council is, is going to do anything against that. But again, it's a county building, and we just need to make sure we're looking after the county's interests first and foremost.
The old expression, good fences make good neighbors. And it is to protect both sides. So there's no ambiguity, but what is green?
Yeah, I saw a paragraph in there was very clear of what would happen if the Art Council did not follow certain regulations. I didn't see any stipulations for the county, and maybe I missed them. You all know how I feel about that building, and you know how I feel about the fact that we could, we've got a community center and park union that's just sitting there. And you know, every time we sit here and talk, I say, why can't we update our Flavanna County Community Center and Park Union and move there, not disrupt the art council? Many, many things for the community happens there. And I'm just laying it out on the table. I mean, that's the way I feel. And it's going to move forward, so I'll move forward. The way it read, the Art Council is in agreement with it. They're, I assumed they would sign it. And at that point, then my, my request has no, no value unless this board decides that we're going to make our Flavanna County Community Center something that we can be proud of. So I told y'all last month that I was finished by something about going to Park Union Community Center. But I'm still not finished. I'm finished right now. But I'm still, I'm just, I'm, I think I may get some decorators or whatever to come down there and do a drawing and show what we can do down there that can make that place, let people come over and do things on the southern side of the county. Since we have a business park, we're moving on up. So we are, you know, that community center needs to represent Flavanna, and it does not. I'm sorry, it does not. And it's been sitting there like that ever since Parkings closed in 1998 or something. So, okay, thank you.
With regard to the 10-year terms, the term is a one-year, one-year term with 10 automatic renewals. At the end of that 10 years, it does not mean we will not enter into another agreement. It just automatically triggers a review to make sure it's working. If we haven't done it in the 10 years during it, at any point, either side can request a review. So we get to next year, and it's just not working. We review it at that point. Or we get five years down the line, and it's been working, but all of a sudden, something happens. So there's nothing in this agreement that prohibits either side from bringing it back up for review at any point during the renewal periods. But if it's all hunky-dory, it just renews automatically for 10 years, at which point we'll look at each other again across the table and say, how do we make it better?
So the only way it would change is if we get an administration.
Or unless we, unless we fix up another space or, or we're moving around, yeah.
I had some questions in the agreement too. However, they were just, they weren't, they weren't questions. I don't want to get in the way of anything. And I talked a few weeks ago with Ms. Harrison to give me a lot of time to understand their wants and concerns. And it was clear to me that this agreement, as it sits, is one that they're, that they were ready to sign. And they're happy to have an agreement. And I'd say, my thought, Mozzell, is, and I mean this at least genuinely from my side. So let's have more of that conversation while I don't want to scuttle the ship for the Arts Council when they're right at the, at the moment of being able to get agreement in place and start being able to use the facility again.
Anyone else? All righty, um, let's see. So do we have, we're looking for head nods here, right?
No, this is, this is actual.
Action matter.
Actual vote. And.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, note that this is memorandum of agreement about sharing space.
Right.
It does not require a public hearing for, as everyone thinks.
Correct. All righty. If there are no other questions or discussion from the board, do we have a motion?
I move Board of Supervisors approve the memorandum of agreement between the county of Flavanna and the Flavanna County Arts Council for space sharing and management of the Carriero Brook Performing Arts Center and authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement, subject to approval as, to form as, formed by the county attorney.
I have a second.
Oh, I second. Thinking about the agreement.
I didn't think we were going to second it. Motion been made by Ms. Seeger, seconded by Mr. Fairchild. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes four one.
Ms. Harris is on Zoom. I don't know if she had anything.
Did you want to add anything, Ms. Harris?
Just thank you, and we'll get you guys invited to all of the things that we have planned. We're trying to get a calendar up and running, and, and we appreciate you guys hanging in there with us to try to work this out. I hopefully it will be something that will benefit the community. And, and Ms. Booker, we want to try to help make something happen in Fork Union as well. We have some tech folks who are really great experts. So call on us when you guys get to that point.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Booker, I'm going to second what Mr. Fairchild was talking about with the formation of the business park over there and everything. And correct me if I'm wrong, about the stuff with the schools. I think last month was the first time I remember you bringing it up vehemently. That's the first time I remember it. And that would provide us a meeting place. They're probably going to have meeting places in their own buildings, but they may want to have something to do there. So that, to me, would be a CIP project for next year possibly to look into. All righty, next up are appointments, Board Commissions and Committee Appointments. And that is, Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the boards. So again, just like we did at the last meeting. And again, we kind of spread this out. Instead of having all the board appointments on one evening, which would have been a lot, we just kind of spread it out over three meetings. So again, we invited whether, whether they're on Zoom or in person to, you know, to kind of speak to the board and just kind of, you know, kind of let the board know a little bit about them and why they're interested in serving on whatever board and committee that they're on. So again, we've got one, one vendor rep for CPMT. We have for the EDA, we have three at-large appointments. And then for Piedmont Virginia Community College, we have one citizen representative. So you know, I think like we did last time, if you want, if you want to have each individual that's either here in person or online, come up and speak first before the board decides to get any further discussion. But again, it's entirely up to the board.
I have a question. On the EDA, could you tell me, Tim Hyde, I believe, was on that last month. Has he, has it changed?
I don't believe he was on the EDA. I know he submitted for the Finance Board, I believe, and the.
I thought he did both. Can you check that, Kelly?
It's her, Caitlin's looking right now. Oh, no. Ed Forso, which he was appointed to last meeting, Finance Board, and then the Planning Commission. So he's, he does have a check mark for EDA.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, first up is Community Policy and Management Team, CPMT.
So I'm not sure if Ms. Winfrey or Mr. Key are either here in person or in Zoom. Which, okay, Mr. Moller, who is the CSA Coordinator, has indicated they're not so. Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening. Of the two, so of the two appointees, CPMT is recommending that Cassandra Winfrey be reappointed at their meeting on, on May 24th. They formally recommended, or they formally approved that recommendation. She's been with us for the past two years and has been a very crucial component of CPMT. She brings a wealth of clinical experience as well as practical knowledge of the county. She's also a resident, she is also a resident of our county as well. So I would encourage, or I would encourage Board Supervisors to reappoint Cassandra Winfrey for another two-year term.
So anyway, for the, for the board, yep, there's two appointments, Ms. Winfrey or Mr. Key. Ms. Winfrey is the current incumbent.
I got a procedural question, and I'm fine with it either way. And I almost feel like over the last couple of meetings, we've been kind of inventing what this process is going to be in relation to it being him in particular. Is that part of our process? That somebody can come up and speak for and say, here's what we're suggesting or who we'd like to have?
It's not up here.
Right.
It's not.
So it's not allowable? Is that? In other words, again, I don't have a problem that he did it. It's procedural question. I thought we were opening.
In this case, the speaker was associated with the county organization that was involved.
Yeah, I mean, so CPMT is the organization that oversees CSA, Children's Services Act. And so, yeah, yeah. And so, so just the CPMT Board made a recommendation. And Mr. Mueller was just bringing that information forward to the, to the board.
I, I would, Mr. Chair, I would like to support Chris in what he's saying, procedural. I think we do, I mean, we've gone through, I think we do, we're getting more and more people signing up. And in the past, sometimes we did, and we have more and more people signing. We need to make, make sure that these people have opportunity to come for us and speak.
Well, I think that's what they said in the beginning.
And so, you know, I really, we need to properly make that out.
They invited, I think they said y'all invited everyone to come and.
Yeah.
They wanted.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, I know that. I, I understand. I understand that. I think we have to really met, talk to them and say, if you're interested, we would like for you to come and meet the board.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Lee, when she, when she.
Not just ask them. I mean, you have to make it, you, you know, come. And sometimes if they're not interested, they won't come.
So you're saying we should make it a requirement to come before the board to speak?
Yeah, we did for the Planning Commission a couple of years ago. And now that's, that's in the future.
I know what you're saying, from now forward, from now forward.
Yeah.
That we make them. The only problem I have with that is if they have extenuating circumstances.
Well, they can, they can tell us.
Make sure they let us know.
Yeah, right.
Any other thoughts from any of the other board members about that?
I guess, so we're saying to require that every applicant.
If they want to be an applicant, they come to before us just so we can put a name with a face if we don't know that.
Yeah, I want to know people.
You say we do that with the planning commission?
We did that a couple of years ago.
I don't know if we made it a requirement. I don't think.
Remember Joe Creasy came and the lady came.
I know that they came, but I think we opened the door up and offered them the opportunity. We didn't make it a requirement.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't remember a requirement from.
That's, think about maybe.
I mean, if the board wanted a requirement, I mean, we can certainly look at the bylaws for how it's done.
Tonight.
I think, I think that, I mean, I think it sort of precludes that if you're interested in the position, that you would make the effort to show up. If you're not here, then that speaks in itself to some degree. You know, I'm not saying that that's always the case. You can have a very qualified candidate who, for whatever reasons, extenuating circumstances.
Something comes up.
Mr. Sheridan said, doesn't show up, but in general, I would certainly, I don't know that I would require, but strongly encourage candidates to come and speak and, and share their ideas as to why they think they're the right candidate for that board.
All righty. Real quick, I just want to clarify with one more question about this to my original question. So then we can have a representative from the EDA come and speak and say, here's who we think you should point to the EDA. Then we could have somebody from Piedmont come and say, here's who we think you should appoint. And do, is that what we're saying that we want each of, every time there's an appointment we made, that we want a representative from them coming to us and saying, here's who we want? And again, this has nothing to do with you. It's pure procedure.
I don't think that's what we're saying.
And I don't think, I mean, they can state their wants, but that's not who we have to go with. Right. Last time, I can't remember who it was, but we put somebody on board, and they stood up and said, we'd like to have the same ones back.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything that says that they can or they cannot. But if the board says we don't want that appointed body or board or advisory committee making a recommendation, we can certainly make that a.
I'm even okay with it. That's what we're saying. We're good with it. I'm just, I'm foreseeing a time where suddenly every one of these has somebody stepping up and making recommendations. And I think it's a good recommendation. I agree with them, but. I'm just devil's advocate.
And there were, there were two different questions. One was, should applicants for the position speak? And the second one was, should there be, should there be a policy with regard to representatives or the, or the position of that board at large in terms of whether they recommend a particular candidate? I think that's, that's two different things.
Yes, Ms. Harris. Yes, Ms. Harris.
Very often, if it's an outside Board, so not our Board, but John, for instance, uh we will get a recommendation from the Director that just comes as an email generally and says advocate from for the reappointment of this person. And it generally does have more reappointments, not so much um
Yeah.
the original appointments. It's somebody that they got on there for a little while.
Oh, it was a library board.
Library.
Last time.
Um so we do often get those and and if those emails can be reviewed, we do before packets, so you can see those recommendations, not so much in person. Advocate
Right.
for that. But um but that is fairly standard to get those from whoever that other's the word or or staff person is.
The emails or letters, yeah.
Yeah, and we've got letters as well, I think.
Yeah, yes.
We do try to pass those along. So it's not out of character to have those. I don't remember when we actually had them anymore.
Yeah.
To have those um.
You know, we could anybody can send a letter to the Board saying, or an email, I think you should do X. But I'm just, and I can leave it alone for now, but when it comes as a part of our uh our procedure um during a meeting, I'm just um.
Can we have someone put put the seizure together in writing?
Yeah, I mean, if the Board doesn't want, yeah, if they don't want a in in in-person, you know, speaker, if it's more of just a, you know, a a letter or a recommendation, we can certainly do that. And then we can look at what the procedure is for.
And I don't think that was planned. I think that was kind of by accident.
Oh, I get it. Yeah.
Mr. Dahl called his name out.
And I'm not even saying I don't want that.
Yeah.
I'm I'm just trying to be sure we have a policy that says, yeah. So maybe that's something we can review and discuss next time.
And can I add one more thing to the Chair? Um resumes may not be necessary. Would you think about resumes may not be necessary? Resumes put on well, a lot of your information there uh for everybody to see. Are maybe they need different questions.
You don't want resumes?
Um you can, you can, they can put down their experience, but not full resumes. And you can have a question that they could put down all of their experiences that relate to this material thing and that will totally
I I personally would like to see the resumes stay.
You do?
Yeah.
Yes. You're saying you don't want resumes?
I don't think they're necessary.
I mean, there's some people that can apply and don't turn one in.
Not very many.
It's well, uh
Yeah.
It makes it a lot better for us to be able to see if we don't know them and
It's just me.
There's some people we don't know. Yeah, I don't know. And it's appreciated to have that, to be able to go through it. I'll use Mr. Dunn. Mr. Dunn was from my district. It, we had no idea he had thirty years with the Corps of Engineer. Alrighty, so let's get back up here to Community Poly- Policy and Management Team. Are any comments or questions about Ms. Winfrey or Mr. Key?
I emailed Mozell asking since she's on it, what her thoughts were and um she, I agreed with what she said, that Mrs. Winfrey uh clearly is a strong uh strong member of that program and and it sounds like maybe even stronger than I'd realized.
Looking at her back, that's all she's done. Now, I will say this for Mr. Key. He's been a mentor in the county and he's lifelong resident, you know. He was on my first football team. I was coached.
Yeah, he and and he has a strong background too.
Mm-hmm.
And and he and his mentoring program is used bad this this policy.
Yeah, right.
Often, so.
So anybody else? I've heard Ms. Winfrey twice.
I I would go with the recommendation of the Board on that one. I mean, I think Mr. Key's qualified as well.
Like I said, Ms. Ms. Eager.
That's fine with me.
Alright, so Ms. Winfrey. Now Economic Development Authority at large, we're looking for three. Um, Mr. Garcia, would you like to speak? I saw you here.
Hello, Supervisors. Rudy Garcia, eight oh two Ravanna Woods Drive, Fork Union, Virginia. Like to take this time to share a brief timeline of the E D A and highlight some of our accomplishments and activities since I've had the opportunity to serve as co-chair and now Chair of that organization. First, I'd like to lay some background for context. Between July of fifteen and June of eighteen, when I joined the Board, um the previous E D A Directors had very little actual engagement in the business community. They acted as a conduit for the Quad County Business Seminars, had a couple of annual meetings, and acted as a pass-through for one shovel-ready project. Additionally, they hosted two small business appreciation dinners. That was the entire activity for those three years. Starting in July of twenty eighteen, I advocated for a mechanism where we could communicate more directly with the business and local larger community. I was successful, and in December of twenty eighteen, we formed a partnership with the Flavanna Chamber and the County Economic Development Office to achieve best pricing and have been running weekly or bi-week monthly ads in the Flavanna Review as the Flavanna Business Corner ever since. This has allowed more of the community to know what is going on with Flavanna businesses. It was right around the time we got that approved, early twenty nineteen, all of the previous members, with the exception of myself and Mr. Putnam, um decided it was time for them to move on from the E D A. So effectively, we've reconstituted the entire E D A since January, February, twenty nineteen. Since then, the E D A has taken a much more active role at being engaged in the business community. We worked with the County Parks and Rec to buy signage for Pleasant Grove to address concerns we heard about visitors not knowing where to go when they leave the park to go visit local businesses. When the pandemic started, we immediately worked in collaboration with the Economic Development Office and set up weekly meetings with the Chambers of Commerce and the Economic Development Offices in Louisa, Green, Madison, Goochlin, and Powhatan to learn and share best practices as our business community struggled with how to pivot and adapt to the ever-changing environment. We also held weekly or bi-weekly Town Hall meetings with the Central Virginia Small Business Development Center to keep our local businesses updated and apprised of those best practices. Once stimulus money became available, we started working with small businesses to provide them the information and resources they needed to apply for both idle and PPP funding. Um had we not done that, I suspect many of our businesses would not have been able to take advantage of those opportunities. We worked with the Community Investment Collaborative and helped spread the word about the small business disaster funding made available through the CARES Act and worked to identify and assist those small businesses to obtain that funding. We purchased and provided hand sanitizers for thirty local businesses. We applied for and obtained a grant from the Charlottesville Community Area Foundation to provide assistance and training to small women and minority-owned businesses in Flavanna County. With the proceeds of that grant, we provided scholarships to fourteen Flavanna businesses to attend the entrepreneur training course provided by C I C. Additionally, we held the first-ever Flavanna Business Pitch Competition, and with the help of the C I C, we're able to award five businesses with a total of eleven thousand dollars in grants or forgivable loans. Two of the Board members here sat on that and were judges. Finally, we helped support and sponsor the first Small Business Community Fair where we had a number of businesses set up so that the public could learn more about what was available in Flavanna County. We did that uh in collaboration with the Flavanna Leaders for Diversity and Equity. The current E D A is dedicated to remaining active and engaged in our local business community. While our prim- primary function for years has been to act as a conduit for funds passing from the county to local businesses for incentives and providing bond guarantees, this E C E D A also sees a huge need for us to be involved with the with encouraging and supporting small locally-owned businesses to allow them to grow, thrive, and remain in Flavanna County. I have been privileged to have been the co-chair and now Chair as we made this transition from a check-passing entity to an organization that is actively involved in economic development. It would be a privilege to continue what we've started for the next four years. Thank you for your consideration. Somebody's your questions, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Putnam, are you present or online? I think so.
I don't see him online.
Uh, Mr. Brian Miller.
Again, don't see him online.
Ms. Brittany Gray. Absolutely.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Gray. Um, can we still share our address?
Yeah, I mean
To to watch that circle in Riverside, so I would be um new to the Board. I would like to propose being on it for several reasons. One, I'm actually part of the Community Investment Collaborative. I'm an alum from their program during COVID um mentioned by Rudy Garcia. I'm a full-time student at Liberty School of Hounds for the Government School. Uh I own a moving company. I'm also a full-time Realtor. I currently work with Stanley Barton. I'll be bringing two hundred new families here next year with Colonial Circle. And um my mom was three. I went to Flavanna High School. Well, I went to Flavanna Central, all the way up. Um and um I love to organize community events, and I would like to be involved in a larger level than I've done in the past by being able to help businesses grow and continue to see growth in this area. Not only for my clients, but also family and friends and neighbors. So that's pretty much what I got.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, next is Mr. Josh Bauer. Do you see him online by chance?
Well, there's only, there's one phone phone that's calling it, but we're not quite sure who it is. We can try and maybe you can let the one last speaker and then we'll see if that's
Okay, and then Ms. Peggy Shanklin. I think I just saw her online.
I thought I did too.
Oh, nope, she's here.
Okay. Um, Peggy Shanklin, eight sixty-five Jefferson Drive at Lake. I had been there since November first of two thousand and one. I've been a small business entrepreneur since two thousand and six. I am currently a Realtor with Long and Foster. I have been involved in um let's see, Women in Business. We are currently seventy-six people strong. Those are paid members. We have over two hundred women in business, and we just started that, I believe, was August last year. Um, I'm involved with the Lake Monocello Doers, and we are reaching out to new members of the Lake to get them involved, not just with Lake events, but also the county. I'm involved with Intac, the Farmer's Market. I started that last year, and I believe it was first part of August. We're up to twenty-four full-time vendors and hundreds of people come and see us during the month. Um, we are working on marketing that to get those numbers up even more. I'm involved with um the Village um People by M C F, pickleball. We are growing that as well, and currently we are out numbering the places to play here at the lake. So there's something else that we're looking for is more places and opportunities. Um, let's see, in the past, I've worked with PAC uh which is the school. I've worked with Palm, which is Parents' Lake Monocello, which is a student group. The Lions Club, Rotary Club for a short period of time, and various other organizations. I just really love our county. And I'm business-minded, and that's what I want to do to help search. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Did they ever find out who the other number is?
Yeah, they're not muting. I'm not sure.
Uh that's bad. No, that's his name myself.
It's not valid, right?
No.
Well, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alrighty. Now, we cut, we need three different uh positions.
Yep.
Open for the comments.
Um, I think there's opportunity in this organization to start introducing some new people into community service and um looking at some of these resumes and talking with a couple of these people, I feel like there's a a healthy list of people here to to uh give a uh try at a new level of service to the community. Um there's a some people in the community that have been serving for a long time on a lot of committees and um in the case of, say, example, for example, Brittany Gray. I I haven't known Brittany long. Um, but I know she's from here. I know she returned back to Flavanna with the family and uh that she's anxious to get involved. Um, I applaud Peggy getting involved. Peggy's been uh in the county a long time, and we just appointed her, I think, to Ed Tac what, last meeting? Maybe two, maybe a month ago. Um I look at people like uh Josh Bauer. I wish I had a chance to talk to him. I couldn't find how to reach him, but and he's got a soft resume as does um Ryan Miller. So I think there's some opportunity to bring in new blood into community services in Flavanna.
Well, I'll speak to Josh. Um he's one of our um engineers. Correct, not not architects. I'm using the wrong word. He's one of our architects. Um, and I like the fact that he's done a lot of the stuff in somewhere else in Pennsylvania, and he really just wants to get involved down here somehow. So I know he wasn't here. That's all I'll say to that.
I agree. He has an incredible um resume, things he's accomplished. And uh I think we're lucky to have him in Flavanna since he's in Pennsylvania.
Um, I certainly think Mr. Garcia has served the E D A very well and serves the community. Um, and yes, he is involved with a lot of different groups, but that can be viewed as an asset, not necessarily as a negative. Um, you know, it's a shame Curtis isn't here. He's been on there for a while as well, too. It would be good for him to speak. Um, you know, I'm glad that both Brittany and Peggy were here to speak on their behalf, and I'm comfortable with with um, you know, those choices there. I uh, you know, again, impressive resumes across the board. I guess it's a little bit about a balance and, you know, what are you looking for in terms of the the overall structure of the Board and the decisions that they make? And how does that, you know, benefit the thinking of that Board together? Um, you know, I I think experience matters, uh but I think new new faces and new ideas matter as well, too. Um, so personally, I I would be comfortable with Mr. Garcia and Ms. Gray and um, you know, I'll put those two out there right now, and I think Mrs. Shacklin would also be very good, too, but um, that's my my thoughts on that. And I wouldn't take away from anybody else. It's just kind of my listing it.
Um I have a question. And I should know the difference, and I'm sure I do, but just sitting there thinking about it, difference between E D A and Intac.
So Intac, you know, one, Intac is an advisory board, and so, you know, certainly there with with the E D A, there are some more um statutory requirements and and, you know, a little bit more of a a a formal proceeding for for what they do. I mean, so from an E D A standpoint, again, you know, they assist if there's any outside agencies looking to do any like uh, you know, any pass-through financing or utilizing the county's um existing um unavailable or unused bond, uh tax exempt bonds or anything like that. So the E D A does that. Um, the E D A has, as as Mr. Garcia noted, um they act as a conduit for a lot of different types of um transactions. Uh, one, you know, the county used the E D A when we were doing the C I C grants pass-through of 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 the grant funds. Um, the E D A is is also often used for a lot of um agreements that the county necessarily can't do directly.
Right.
Um, you know, for instance, the um the Colonial Circle, the Affordable, uh the workforce housing, the tax rebates, um that funnels, that passes through the E D A. Um, and I'm sure there's some others that we like Firefly and some things like that.
Best question.
Yes.
I I'll make a better question, I think. Don't they work together and rely on each other somewhat?
E D A and Intac?
Or is that tag just work with us?
No, I I mean, there may be a little um a a little fall over a little bit, but not a ton. I mean, Intac deals with more like, well, you know, kind of intimate county projects and stuff like that. You know, for instance, Intac, um they're working on, and Mishmec. Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, Mr. Spitzer said, you know, that they worked on the 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 Village of Palmyra sign that the Board just approved last meeting. So so they're working on kind of more
Individual projects.
Individual, smaller projects, you know, and and making recommendations to to staff and and and, you know, so it's from an economic development and and tourism standpoint, whereas E D A is is a little more, got a little more formal meat behind it, so.
And or any of these members, these folks, members of Intac?
Um
Yes, Peggy.
Yes, yeah.
We just, we just put Peggy on.
Yep. Yep.
And that's the only one?
Yeah, these are the new, these are.
Okay. Uh, uh, and that's what I'm just trying to get at, to get as many people involved as we can.
Um, I, I also think, like, as far as Brian Miller and Joshua Bauer go. I mean, we, we're, we're sitting here, last couple of meetings, trying to figure out ourselves what the whole, and having discussions about whether people stand up and give a presentation, do they submit a resume and so on? Um, I, I don't know that those two people would. I mean, so did they get, you said they did get an email saying they could make a presentation?
Oh, yeah. Well, no, I mean, yeah, we, we've always let individuals know that they, that they're more than welcome to come to the board and, and, and speak, you know, on the evening that, that, uh, um, that the appointments are being made.
Okay. Um, I was also looking, so Curtis. I didn't realize Curtis, has he only ever been on economic media?
Well, he's on more than this.
Yeah, he was on the partnership for aging. He did step down, yeah.
Partnership for aging, he stepped down.
Yes.
So. What I was wondering about and with what Rudy said, there's been absolutely great progress in the EDA. While at the same time Rudy has, uh, as he stated in his application, gosh, he's been Chair of the, uh, the Chamber, um, the EDA, I think the Leadership Class. We just appointed him, reappointed him last meeting to, um,
Finance.
The Finance Board and, um, I mean, it looks like to me if we're going to try to, with uh, great appreciation for everything Rudy's doing, if we're going to try to introduce, uh, new positions and if it was uh, Curtis or Rudy, and Curtis is only doing one thing and I think has been co-chair.
Um, yes, go.
Currently, yeah, current chair.
No, no, but what, but has been co-chair.
Co-chair.
Yeah, I leave, so I, I don't worry.
He was Chair.
Yeah.
He was Chair.
So, um, so I, I, I just, again, with all great respect for everything Rudy's been doing, trying to get other people involved, I think if Curtis stayed and, um, again, I've made comments about Brittany getting involved in the energy she has. And Josh Bauer just has a heck of a resume. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, again, I think, I think that to take the sitting chair of a committee and somebody who's been as actively involved in this community um, is, is, you know, not really appropriate, especially when in his involvement with that committee, he really has pushed it forward and driven it. So I would be against not having Mr. Garcia, uh, continue on the EDA board. Um, you know, I just think he, he adds a lot of value and, um, it's okay if you're involved in many things. That, that, that just means that you create a lot of connections. It's wonderful to have people that are participating, but it's also important, important and valuable to have people that are connected at many various levels. And, you know, Mr. Garcia is certainly connected very, very plugged into the business community, uh, and to the Flavanna community at large. Uh, so, uh, I, I, I mean, again, I'm, I, I like Mr. Putnam as well too and, but I'm strongly in favor of maintaining Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I am, I am too. Um, because I, because I think, um, he has all the knowledge and if we put some new people, that, you know, he will be able to guide them and they will be able to pick up from him. You know, in the past, in the past, we used to automatically put people back on boards and commissions if they wanted to get back on.
If they're an incumbent.
I don't think we've ever had that many.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
This has been miserable to try and do each year because we've had so many wonderful applicants. I mean, um, but Miss Eager, did you have something you wanted to say?
I think Mr. Garcia is the EDA. I mean, before it happened, before he came on, he's right, very, it did very little, didn't have any direction.
Okay, well, that's, that's three people. So that, that one's decided.
Well, that's, that's one.
That's one. We gotta get two more.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'd, I'd also like to, uh, speak for Joshua Bauer. I don't know him, but you said you know him.
He's come here before us to speak. Um, remember the winery, the one that wanted to buy the winery last year? That's Josh Bauer.
So he owns the winery?
No, he, it, it ended up falling through. He wanted to buy the one in Scottsdale. He, he bought the one and he came and spoke to us. And he's also spoken to us because he's the one that did the plans for the basement, the basement, yeah.
Okay.
Over here, uh, smaller guy with glasses.
Yep, we're a boat.
Where's the bow tie all the time?
Dark hair.
Just don't ask him to build scaffolding.
Okay.
He did his homemade scaffolding and didn't work though, very well.
And, and I would, I would recommend, um, Brittany Gray as one.
Well, Chris, Brittany and Josh?
I, I would go for them.
Brittany and Josh?
I'm, I'm okay with, uh, Brittany. Um, I think I would probably pick Curtis over Josh, but that's just me.
Well, I mean, Josh, Curtis is from my district. He's done a great job. Um. No, you really can flip a coin. Um, I just, the one that stuck out to me the most was Josh when I read the resume and everything else that he's been a part of doing.
I agree.
Alrighty, so thank you. We decided on the others and, uh, Brittany and Josh. So next up is Piedmont Virginia Community College Board, Dr. Fred Lang.
Thanks for allowing me to come and talk to all of you. Um, I've been on the leadership course, took the leadership course, and I've also been on the EDTAC committee for a couple of years and enjoyed that. My entire career has been about education. I've had thirty-plus years of teaching online for various universities around the country. I was the Director of Training for the US Department of Commerce in Washington for a dozen years. And I'm, I think what I can bring to the board and, and to Flavanna County is leverage virtual and online learning with residential learning, so that every student has the same chance as anyone else to be educated. So that's the kind of unique background that I have and, uh, look forward to, uh, to your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Edna Harris. Miss Harris online?
Uh, unless, unless she's the phone number, that's the only.
And if they're not unmuting, there's not a whole lot we can do. Uh, I see Ben in the back, Ben Shaw.
Uh, Mr. Eric, Vice President of the Board. Uh, good afternoon, Ben Shaw, forty-six oh eight Venable Road. That's good to see those of you that don't know yet very well and those that do know. Um, I appreciate your consideration of my application. I, uh, am a resident of Louisa, but having traveled the country and also the world, I actually immigrated to the, the, the county with Hills. Um, I'm a graduate of PBCC, as are all of the, uh, my siblings, all three of them. Uh, it's also my expectation that my children, uh, two of them will be later, um, attending PVC, PBCC themselves. Uh, I have a vested interest in that, uh, institution, being an institution that represents the workforce needs, workforce needs of Flavanna as well as, uh, Louisa and surrounding area that evolves as UVA and Centerra and all the other major employers in Charlottesville uh, have changing workforce needs. Um, but it also needs to represent the county in such a way that people can go there, get the training they need, return and actually live off of what they're making. Uh, so I, I, I'm not an education background. Looking at the applicants on the list right now, I'd say any one of them is a fantastic addition to this board, anyone. Um, but my, my simple pitch is, if I, if you may, is, um, my kids are going to go there in the near future. Uh, I want it to be good, uh, bang for my buck or their buck. Uh, and I want it to be something that lands them jobs or helps them transition to the next, uh, four-year university. Uh, I've been there. I've had, I have a quarter-century um, history, personal relationship with PVC. I've been there, graduated and came back on multiple occasions. My wife has worked there. Um, so I love the place. I still actually maintain pen pal relationships with at least one of my old professors from many years ago. Uh, so I love your, your consideration, but I certainly yield to all the other smart people on this as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Next up is Valerie Pallmountain. I know she's on the line.
Oh, she's the phone number, I think.
Hi.
Hey.
This is Valerie. Hey, I'm here. Hi, Valerie Pallamountain, seventeen Fleetwood Drive, Palmyra. Uh, as, uh, as you probably know, I worked at PBCC as the Dean of Workforce Services for seventeen years. Um, I'm sorry, sixteen years and retired just a year ago. Uh, before that, I, I was also in education in the community college system in Pennsylvania. And I also have a twenty-year career in business. So I, I bring a lot of experience, not only in education, uh, particularly in, uh, community college, but I also bring a lot of experience in workforce development. Um, they, uh, my interest is that there are a lot of changes going on at PBCC right now, which you probably know about with uh, Frank Friedman, Dr. Frank Friedman is retiring, um, next month and, uh, they've hired a new, uh, a new president. There are some changes already happening in senior management. And I just look at the experience that I've had, particularly in workforce development and think that I might be able to help the new president transition in, um, in learning about our community, the Charlottesville area, particularly Flavanna County. And, uh, and also, um, to, to help the college, uh, develop workforce programs that are more appropriate for Flavanna County. Uh, back in, uh, oh my goodness, about five, oh, I lose track because of COVID, maybe seven or eight years ago. Uh, I was instrumental in starting up Kids College at Flavanna, which was very, very successful. And the kids loved it and the college loved it and we saw a lot of the kids go on to become, to matriculate as college students. So, uh, I do agree with the, the speaker previously who said that any of the candidates would be excellent. I'm very pleased that so many good candidates have applied for, for being on the board. But I would, I would be honored to be considered, um, if, uh, if you decide to select me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Charles Hayden Thomas Parish.
Oh, there you are.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Um, hi everyone. My name's Hayden Parish. Um, and as many of you know, I served as a college advisor at Flavanna County High School, um, from twenty eighteen to two thousand and twenty. Um, where in, in my work there, um, both years, I would, twenty-five to thirty percent of the graduating class went to PBCC. Um, so I became quite familiar with what students were looking for, um, what drove them to PBCC, what they hoped to gain from it. Um, and I've kept up with many of them since, since then and, um, their experiences with PBCC. Um, after that, I, I went and earned my masters, um, in education. Um, and I just signed my contract and will be working as a school counselor at the high school next year, Flavanna County High School. Um, I look forward to continuing to support, um, our future students in their pro-secondary planning. Um, and of course, if, if appointed to the PBCC College Board, I will incorporate my professional experiences as well as our students' experiences in the PVC strategic planning to ensure that our students and community continue to be the best served by PBCC as possible. Um, so thank you so much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Happy, happy deciding.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to our world. We got five quality candidates.
Yes.
Um, already I'll open the floor. Any comments or?
Gee whiz.
Well, in, in my opinion, um, two candidates, uh, stand out. Um, that would be Mr. Pallamountain, Mr. Lang. That is not to say that the rest of the candidates aren't excellent. Uh, I would certainly love to see Hayden's youth on the board. I think that could be a plus. Um, you know, Mr. Shaw with his experience in terms of being twenty-five-year veteran of the system also offers a lot. But, um, you know, when you look at the, the sort of depth of educational experience and involvement um, at higher levels, Mr. Lang stands out as does Mr. Pallamountain. Um, and so those would be my two preferences for the candidates with, uh, you know, with, with benefits on both sides. And Mr. Lang brings an outside viewpoint, having come from up Blue California, if that's right. Um, and, uh, Ms. Pallamountain, of course, has a lot of inside knowledge, which as she mentioned, could, 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 um, help, uh, in the transition with the new board. Um, was certainly instrumental in tying Flavanna with, um, with PBCC as well too. So, uh, I think there's, those are the candidates, in my opinion, that stand out the most and would, would probably add the most value.
I'm, I'm sent here. One of them, one of them was in my youth group and the other one told me he's a twenty-five-year veteran and I'm going, my God, that makes me old because I've known him for about ten years now, uh, and we all know his dad. Uh, but, uh, remember his dad working here. Uh, but I mean, yeah, I mean, when I read Dr. Lang's resume, that was, that was. All of them are impressive, but.
Yes, very. And I went back trying to decide and looked at the, uh, the Piedmont manual and looked at kind of like the job description of what a board, what the board members are expected to do to try to get my head wrapped around it. And I mean, I'm, I was trying to real support Dr. Lang. And Pallamountain, Valerie is right there and Shaw and, oh my goodness.
We, we, we have lots of talent.
Thank, just thank you to all of you. Mr. Fair, John, Miss Eager, y'all, anything y'all want to add?
It's really tough because they're all.
They're all, I mean.
Yeah. You know, we're actually having different kind of, like, you know, different something.
Besides throwing in a fishbowl.
Yeah, yeah.
So I communicated, I'm sorry, we didn't say you.
Good, no, go ahead.
I communicated some with Valerie and, and had known her a lot over the years and, um, and on one side would look at it and say the same thing I was saying earlier. Um, Valerie has done a lot and, um, Dr. Lang, boy, it's a strong resume again, everybody, but, uh, that's a mind that we would want at the table. With that said, uh, Valerie makes, I think, a really strong point that in this transition with Dr. Friedman leaving, that having a base of, I mean, who's going to know more about how Piedmont functions and the good and, and so on. Uh, the organization than Valerie, having been a part of it and now a board member helping to transition the new uh, director into it. It's just, I think it's a unique point in time uh, regarding Valerie's need or importance to that, that board.
Um, in the, um, in the policy, did you read, there was a statement about they did not hire people who work there. Did that? Did, did Valerie fall under that? I, I didn't quite understand.
Couldn't be on the board?
Right, couldn't I be a boy?
Well, that's probably, I mean, that's probably if she was a current, current employee.
Oh, it said, I don't know. I read it different. I don't know. You all have. And it said something about two thousand and seven. I didn't get it.
I thought it said current employee. And also that you couldn't be a public official.
Yeah.
Right, those were the two that stood out.
Oh, I know that. I saw the current informant, but, but y'all agreed it.
Yeah, I don't think it.
I just on facial.
If they're.
Misinterpret, don't want to.
Well, she's looking, Mrs. Eager.
What?
You have some thoughts, though?
Did you want to add something?
Um, it's a very difficult, uh, decision. Uh, I've been on, um, EDTAC with, uh, Dr. Lang and, um, he's a, a, a good person and works hard. And Valerie probably would be of great service to the, to the, uh, Humidity College.
Alrighty, well.
Mary would be.
Please do.
So, uh, this is the Virginia Community College.
So, uh, this is the Virginia Community College System Policy Manual, two point one point four, paragraph C. Um, additionally, no former full-time employee of the community college shall be eligible to serve on the college board. Local college board members serving as of March two thousand and seven, who were former full-time employees of the community college would be eligible to serve out the remainder of their current term and be eligible for one additional consecutive term. All members of the college board shall be deemed members-at-large, charged with the responsibility of serving the best interest of the whole region.
It says no former full-time employee.
Certainly does seem.
Miss, that's a good catch, Ms. Booker.
This is from a revised edition, May fourth, two thousand and eleven.
Well, she's definitely.
Given that, I think that, that Mr. Lang is the obvious choice.
Do we, do we have hit nods on that one?
Is that the right interpretation?
Well, it's, you want to read it one more time?
Let, let me take it down some.
Oh, man. He probably wrote it.
No, I didn't.
It did, right? It didn't say eighteen.
I just thought we needed to look at it.
It's one sentence, seems to be a pretty categoric. Says additionally, no former full-time employee of the community college shall be eligible to serve on the college board.
Well, that, that's pretty simple. Uh, uh, I wanted to make sure that that's what I heard.
That's what you heard. Well, just to, just to clarify. I want to clarify that Valerie was a full-time employee. I mean, to me, it kind of goes without saying, but Valerie, I think is still on there. Can we?
Valerie, would you mind unmuting?
She's, she's still there. Oh, there she goes.
Hello.
Hey, Ms. Palamount.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am. We just need to clarify.
I was not aware of, I was not aware of that restriction. I'm sorry.
And, and you were a full-time employee, correct?
Yes.
I was a full-time employee, yes.
Yeah, I just.
Thank you for your service. I'm just glad we caught it before we made the mistake. Alrighty, so.
So I, I was. Uh, Mr. Lang, yeah.
Mr. Lang. Yes, Mr. Lang. So we got, alright, we got Mr. Lang down there. We've got Rudy, uh, Brittany and Josh. And then we have Ms. Cassandra Winfrey.
And with the board supervisors approved the fall in board of commission for committee appointments. Community Policy and Management Team, vendor rep Cassandra Winfrey. Economic Development Authority at Large Rudy Garcia. Economic Development Authority at Large Brittany Gray. Economic Development Authority at Large Joshua Bauer. Can't read the terms. I'm sorry. I'm backing out on that. Um, for.
For four years.
For four years.
Two years on the board.
Effective seven, one, oh, they're all for four years.
No, two, two years.
Two years for Ms. Winfrey. And for the remainder, uh, for the Piedmont Virginia Community College Board, Citizen Representative Dr. Fred Lang. Uh, those are all from seven, one, twenty, twenty-two to six, thirty, twenty, twenty-six.
Got a motion made by Mr. Brian, excuse me, suggested by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye.
Thank you to all the strong candidates.
I can tell you right now, I, I do not remember in, I think this is ten years I've been on the board ever having it be this difficult.
You're right. Yeah, I've been.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, and I'm, I'm, I, I promise you, I'm not just saying that, guys. When you've got six people up there, four, five, usually we look at it like we're going, okay, let's get one.
We're going to streamline it and get some things.
Alrighty, presentations. C, Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission Reasonable Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, Ian Baxter.
Hey, y'all. How are you doing?
Doing great. How are you doing, Ian?
Well, my name is Ian Baxter. I'm a regional planner at the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. Um, Mr. Doll, are you going to be scrolling through this? So I'm here, yeah, sure. I'm here to talk to y'all today about the current hazard mitigation plan update for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we're currently in the midst of that. I, I wanted to come before y'all, um, early in, or I guess before we come to you later with an actual, uh, asking you to adopt the actual plan. Um, but I'm happy to talk through the process, uh, talk about some of the data we use to make our determinations or that the, uh, working group used to make their determinations and then sort of give you the next step. So, next slide. So the purpose of the natural hazard mitigation plan, it has a few separate purposes. Um, I'd say the main purpose in terms of, um, y'all's interest is that FEMA requires natural HMPs as a condition for eligibility to receive, uh, certain mitigation program funds and grants. Um, and so a, as the Regional Planning District, um, we, uh, conduct this plan update on behalf of our six-member, uh, localities, member jurisdictions. Um, but essentially the plan itself, in addition to, uh, helping Flavanna receive funds if necessary, it also, uh, is a document that basically, uh, has, it documents, uh, where, you know, natural hazards happen, uh, how severe they are, as well as provides space for localities to, um, designate or, or put in specific, uh, mitigation action items. And so these are the, uh, six required sections. I'm going to briefly talk through each of them, um, before I can answer any questions if y'all have them. Um, but essentially the, the plan requires that there's an outline of the actual process used, a, a profile of the region, um, that it's covering. Um, the hazard identification analysis, also known as the HIRA, is the, sort of the information about the potential hazards, as well as a ranking, um, of their significance or risk to the region, um, a vulnerability and capabilities assessment, which basically, uh, determine how damaging some of these events could be if they occurred in the region, um, with some modeling tools provided by FEMA. Um, and a capability assessment determines how ready, uh, a locality is to react or respond to these, um, events. And, and this mitigation strategy is a list of, uh, action items that, uh, each locality will take to address over the next, address natural hazards over the next five years. And so just a brief look at the timeline, if you shift your focus to the far right, uh, we are actually, today is June first. So the draft plan, uh, became available on the TJPDC website today. Um, it will be open for a month, um, for public comment. Um, I'd be happy to share, um, with you all the, the link to that. Um, but before this, we basically had to conduct, we had to create our working group, um, or, or resemble our working group, which is a mandated, uh, feature of this plan. Uh, there's a member of each locality, primarily emergency management personnel, um, or planning department personnel from each of our six-member governments or member counties and, and the city, um, that serve on this working group. And they're the folks that, uh, determined the HIRA, which is the ranking of the, the hazards, um, as well as work through, uh, the goals and objectives of the plan, um, and conduct an annual review in every May, every May. Um, so that's, we've conducted a public survey. We've had a public event, um, in February. Uh, we've also gone and met with, uh, local staff at all of the member localities to talk through mitigation action items. Um, so yeah, the, the HIRA, which I was just basically describing earlier, is, it, it's, it's essentially a matrix of all the natural hazards that affect the planning districts. Um, some of the data, which, uh, we can scroll through briefly, um, informs the working group, basically each of the locality submitted, uh, a ranking. Um, and if you can, you can go to the next slide. Um, every, every locality, uh, contributed one of these, and this is the aggregate, um, HIRA that we, we put together from those, uh, scorings. Uh, I will say, uh, while some of the, uh, numbers, the rankings, so the probability, uh, human impact, property impact and business app impacts changed slightly from the two thousand and eighteen plan, um, this is essentially the same order. Uh, the only major difference is FEMA required a communicable disease slash pandemic section, um, of, for obvious reasons in the, uh, in the actual plan itself. And so that came in at the fourth, um, in the fourth spot, but, uh, the rest of them were, were pretty much unchanged. Um, and again, some of the data I'll go through in a moment are all, I'll, I'll just provide an overview of the data we used, um, informed locality staff as they work through this, as well as their own knowledge of their own, um, you know, where they work, uh, some of the, the calls that they receive, et cetera. Um, and you can just, I mean, you can't really read any of this. I just wanted to give, you know, you guys, it's all in the plan, I promise. Um, but essentially, we, we source our data from, and you can just scroll the next few slides of these. Uh, we source our data for, for these determinations from a variety of different, um, federal, state and local agencies. And I can just walk through a few of them, Department of Forestry, Health, Emergency Management, uh, Conservation and Recreation, DEQ, Department of Energy, UVA, the CDC, NOAA, NASA, USGS and WS. Um, so we're working, uh, PDC staff has worked really hard to compile all of this data to make it as recent as possible. You know, in some cases, um, we're getting probably about twenty twenty-one is the latest, um, that we were able to access. But, uh, we present this basically to the working group, um, and each of those members goes back and confers with their staff, um, confers with community members, um, and gives us that HIRA matrix. And, uh, yeah, apologies on the formatting there, but the, yeah, again, the communicable disease chapter was entirely new and worked really closely with, uh, the Blue Ridge Health Department, as well as the Virginia Department of Health to get, um, that accurate data. Um, and if you want to just keep moving over to the vulnerability assessment. Uh, sorry, the next slide. So this is a, we use a software from FEMA called HazIS, which models, uh, for hurricanes, earthquakes and floods. Um, and we also use some other data sources to, to, um, generate estimated risk. But we're really looking at expected losses in human life and, uh, property damage. And so if you move to the next slide, this is, uh, one of the, uh, outputs from that HazIS software. This is a modeling a hurricane event. Um, and if, you know, if you look closely, I guess on this screen, um, each of those colors represents, uh, potential, uh, estimate property damage. Um, and so this is measured in thousands of dollars. And so this is modeled after Hurricane Fran, um, which happened in nineteen ninety-six. And it's the equivalent of an approximate two-hundred-year event, which is a, basically the chances of this happening is one every two hundred years. Um, and the next slide.
So, can I ask a question? So, in the center, uh, of that, of course, is a red spot in Flavanna.
Like.
Like Monticello.
Like Monticello.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a good, yeah, there it is, yeah. And, uh, yeah, this is just, uh, we use, uh, HazIS to also generate some flood maps. So this is, uh, town of Scottsville. Um, and again, these are estimated losses as well as, uh, the level, the, um, depth that the flooding would occur on the banks of the James. Um, but I just wanted to give you guys just a brief, sort of a quick overview of the type of data that we use. Um, and if you keep going, there should be, um, this is a wildfire map, uh, generated from the, from the Southern Wildfire Risk Assessment, um, which is a group, and again, these, it's a lot easier to read within the actual plan, I promise. Um, and yeah, the final thing I wanted to touch on is the mitigation actions that are contained within the plan. So, um, we work with locality staff to generate these. Um, so kind of the process that we have to, to go through is, there's a full list that was included in the two thousand and eighteen plan. We worked with the staff to determine, um, to kind of catalog that, to see what's been done, um, what's in progress, what's changed. Um, this is the, a little table that each of those, uh, lives within, so to speak. And it basically outlines, you know, funding method, implementation schedule and, and the ranking, um, a priority ranking. Um, so we worked with Debbie Smith here in Flavanna County on generating new action items, um, which are included in the packet. Um, a lot of them were carried over from the two thousand and eighteen plan. Um, some of their priorities changed, some of the priority ranking changed, some of the implementation schedule changed. Um, but that was our primary point of contact, uh, here in Flavanna. And then I think the next slide is, yeah, our next step. So again, I mentioned we have our public comment period happening here in the month of June. Um, after we, uh, incorporate the comments and feedback we receive from not only, uh, the public accessing the document, but, but potentially, um, boards in, in the City Council of Charlottesville. Um, and again, I'm going before all of the, uh, the boards that would be, uh, adopting this ordinance in two thousand and twenty-three. So all of our six-member localities, as well as the towns housed in the planning district, um, will then submit to VNM and FEMA. They have a thirty and forty-five day review period respectively. Um, and then our work, uh, turns towards the formal adoption with localities. So we try and get an ordinance, a resolution in front of y'all, in front of all the other, um, planning district localities that would need to pass this to access that FEMA funding. But, um, I would be happy to answer any questions if y'all have them, but that's kind of where we are right now.
I wasn't laughing at your plan when I laughed at the beginning, but I was looking down through there and I saw, there's a pretty good chance we're going to have some windstorms.
Yeah.
Trees fall almost on buses this year.
Yeah.
The, the heavy winter snow, yeah, they, they still clean up trees.
Yeah, there's a reason those were top two.
Were there any major changes between, you know, the, the last couple of years that you identified for Flavanna, working with Flavanna team here?
No, nothing, I mean, I'm sure if I thought about, if I had more time to think about it, yes, nothing comes to mind. I mean, those, those risks, I mean, flooding is flooding, I think also in that dam failure, I think was brought up with, um, I think the, I forget what the name of the dam was that almost, uh.
MacGyver.
Yeah, MacGyver Dam. Um, so it's usually, I, I would say there's a certain element, I mean, kind of the point of it happening every five years, there's a certain element of recency bias, but basically whatever's occurring either most prominently or most frequently. So I would say that flooding, uh, dam failure, and then the, the high windstorms.
Um, and outside of Flavanna, were there any risks that you identified in the TJPDC community that were sort of new and different?
I mean, we're seeing, I, I think we're seeing more frequent and severe storms, um, as, as a, I think as a general rule, you know, across the region. I would say that the one, uh, risk that didn't really change was wildfire risk, um, didn't really change very much. And I think the primary place where that would occur is Green and Nelson. Um, but I, I think we're seeing not only, uh, you know, an increase in the heat, uh, you know, heat maps we were able to look at and, and some of the heat islands that we were able to identify in Charlottesville, but also I think the frequency and severity of some of the storms that we're seeing during the summer. But again, I am not a meteorologist or any of that. I just read the data. Um, but smarter people told me that, so.
Alright. Anyone else? Thank you so very much. Do appreciate it. And I will not bring up sixty-nine and seventy-two, those five-hundred-year events within three years. Uh, next up is D, Sheriff's Office firing range improvements, Reserve Deputy Mel Sheridan and Sheriff Eric Hess. Looks like Major Wells.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'm Mel Sheridan, and it's been my privilege, frankly, to, uh, serve as a sworn reserve deputy now with the sheriff's department for nine years. Uh, most recently, the last four, there was a stint where we didn't have anybody at time, but I started under Sheriff Washington for five years and then now for four with, uh, Sheriff Hess. And it's, uh, it's simply been a, a pleasure. But, uh, that said, I've, uh, undergone, as every other reserve deputy has, the required training for the first several years, uh, particularly firearms training. That's what this is about. And, and for those first four, five years, we had a basic requirement, and then we all had to meet that, obviously, to, uh, to be a part of the department and, uh, and, and perform your duties. But, uh, in the last four years and probably prior to that, but since the reserve deputies have been back online with the department, it has been, uh, the, the training has been some of the best I've ever received. My background has been in, uh, leadership and, and weapons training, prior to being commissioner, I might add. Uh, so I've had a lot of that, and I'll, I'll say this. The, the sheriff's department has an excellent weapons training team. I mean, I, I said it, I'll just refer to my notes, because they're succinct. The professionals are dedicated and they are thorough, uh, in every phase of training that they do. Uh, so in going through the training for the last few years, it became obvious that it's just a lot more than the basic requirements. Uh, they have got a lot of enhanced training on there, primarily moving as a team and, uh, you know, transitioning from one area to another, first aid triage, et cetera. They are long days. I would ask, Mr. Doll, if you would, could you slip over to, uh, I think it's the third slide there. I only put it on there just to, to point out.
The third slide.
Uh, well, I thought you had the slides on there, the, uh, the in-service trainings. Uh, if you don't have it, that's okay. I'll just, I can cover both of them. Uh, what it boils down to is this, when we go to the range, we go at about approximately eight, uh, eight o'clock in the morning and we're there to well past.
There we go.
There you go. If you look at the lower part of that, it's a, it's a twelve-hour scenario. A, and that's, that's not terrible in June, July and August, when you got long days. When you go in November, when you go in March, you're out there in the dark, starting and you're well past dark finishing. So here's what it boils down to, without belaboring it. The facility we have is adequate, it's at the, uh, it's at, at the landfill, it's, or the recycle facility. Convenient, yes, ma'am. It's, uh, it's rudimentary. But, uh, it became pretty obvious after the last few years. It just needs some basic improvements and, and so the reserve deputies, well, we tried to see if we couldn't initiate a little project to get the, the basics of just power and, uh, and lights to the facility. Uh, I talked with, uh, uh, you know, the county team, you know, with regard to what it might cost to do that. Uh, and Mr. Doll, if you now, I hate to ask you to back up to phase one, phase two. It's a small ask. It's approximately six thousand dollars. It's fifty-nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. The sheriff and, and Major Wells, you know, at the end of this, we're at the end of fiscal, you looked at their budget. And, and collectively, the two phases, again, it's fifty-nine hundred dollars. It's a very small ask to give uh, the, uh, the just basics of electricity and lights to, uh, to the facility. If you get electricity, that gives you a couple of options, you know. You could actually put a small air conditioner out there in that small building. You could put a heater, you could put, you could have a lot of creature comforts would be nice. So what I'm asking the board to do is come up with a, a three-thousand-dollar basically match. It's, uh, the sheriff's, the department looked at their end-of-year budget and found thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars that they've identified that they could move out of their, their, you know, year-end twenty-two money back to support this project, you know, lateral to Public Works. year, year end twenty two money back to support this project, you know, lateral to public works and to Mr. Hickman's team. Mr. Hickman's been great in working with me to identify what the, uh, the fix would be. It's not great deal, we had two buildings on site that have electricity and, and, and service. It, uh, not on the firing range, but in the general proximity. So just about a running underground conduit from one of those facilities to the firing range and then putting up some basic, basic lighting. So what I'm asking for the board's consideration on, um, it, it almost seems like I'm under house arrest, but Major Wells, Major Wells told me, you know, he snatched me off if, you know, misstep. But what I'm asking is a three thousand dollars of potential year end funding be lateral to the public works to support this project. Uh, and I, I and the reserve deputies and frankly, the entire sheriff's department would much appreciate your support in this, in this undertaking. Be happy to answer any question.
You know, I have never seen that shooting range and I may have right across the street from, I haven't seen anybody over there.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's over the hill.
It's at the very back of the landfill. And it's also on the backside, it drops off significantly. And it's, uh, it, it's probably a hundred and twenty five feet below grade of the, of the landfill itself. Uh, the, the recycled.
And the.
And.
Silence.
No, there, no, no, none of those, uh, I can't emphasize enough. I mean, I spent twenty years, uh, in the military, underwent a lot of weapons training and it was good. The weapons training team that Sheriff Hess and Major Wells have are absolutely excellent. They go well above what's required to make it, uh, integrated and, and, and challenging it, frankly, they don't cut you any slack, you gotta meet the requirements. And I'm the, uh, I'm the, I guess I'm the canary in the coal mine. If the old guy falls over, then maybe they could take a break, uh, because I am the old guy out there. But they could use these small changes to make it a much better facility. Electricity frankly eventually would lead to, uh, being able to have a better firing range so that you can actually get targets to turn and things like that. But other questions?
To me, it's all, that's just a very small price to pay to make us better. Anybody got a question in back there?
And safe.
Well, that safer is underneath that.
Because I said, not on a pole, they're on a.
Uh, no ma'am, what, what was it we're proposing? Yes, they are on a pole, but not an elevated pole, not just a couple of six by sixes, maybe. Yeah, maybe twelve feet tall. It just simply light up the, and it's more than just a fine range because there's a lot of little maneuver, they use a couple of old cars. And, and frankly, the, 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 the training is very challenging. And it's, it's live fire, uh, challenging, so you work as a team.
And, and with the age of some of their reserve deputies?
Yeah.
The liability, you know, we'd help out with lights out there.
Like I said, uh, it's the best weapons training I've received, short of being in a Cobra. But that, uh, a difference.
Is, is there, um, just curious, is there any type of regional facility for this shooting range?
Essentially reuse the. And their range is actually, thanks to Harrison, the unit center on Harrison, they're not, as you know, it's quite a distance. Like when I first came here, we literally went to the backyard, attacked the target to the tree and shot at it.
That's a fact. Wow.
It's significantly better, lighting is just improved, that makes it more usable. Definitely night fire and the light fire right now is full car, that lights is fine, trying to step eliminated. Uh, so this is a great step.
And how is it range, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, do you do SWAT training?
No ma'am.
I just to let you know that Albemarle uses my farm and they come out when they want to, uh, train their SWAT team. They do canine and, uh, car approaches and, um, some shooting as well.
Yes, ma'am, it, it, uh, there are other residents in the county that have been gracious, but make their, their property available to different, like Major Wells said, for years. It just simply took place in the backyard of one of the deputy's parents' house. Uh, you know, because it's the basic requirement you have to get.
So.
Yeah.
So how long has that range been there?
Oh, six, seven years, seven years maybe. So we built it very slowly, the county is nice up here. It is not impressive, it's basically a hillside. We'll see stands put up where you, we have two dot boards and stick them there and put targets on them. But at least it's environments, maybe eight lanes, ten lanes wide, so we have it marked off in the distances. If you remember the training presentation I gave several months back, kind of state mandates, sort of marked off or state handed the training basically. And then we use a little bit of range for rifles, but it's really, there are.
And the reason it hasn't come up before now, just not wanting to ask too much at one time, or just.
Just a suggestion on, frankly, you know, it, uh, we, the department's made it work. It is a very safe range, that is the one thing, it's because it has a seventy five foot high berm behind it. Uh, it's just, we saw a need and honestly, we felt like it was not a big ask and it would be pretty significant improvement to a facility we have to have and. It's just a need that we identified and, uh, they got a lot of needs. So this one was something we thought we could take on and I don't mind coming asking for money, y'all know that. Sometimes I get it, sometimes I don't, but I hope y'all find it in your heart to do this because this will significantly improve their ability to enhance the training. I know, uh, Mr. Doll had asked if y'all would defer it to, but that's why I came to see if there are any extra, any additional questions associated with this particular project.
Yeah, again, there's no, there's no decision necessarily. I mean, again, this is something that was kind of out of budget cycle and the sheriff's office kind of brought it forward. I mean, you know, so you certainly have options between, you know, if you wanted to use the three thousand from the sheriff's budget savings and then take three thousand, you take from the B O S contingency, could I get off of the B O S contingency? I mean, so there's, there's a couple of options to go from a, from a funding standpoint. In the B O S contingency right now, there's ninety three thousand and some, some change in there right, right at this moment. So if the board wants staff to move forward, the funding, I mean, there's, there's a funding stream there.
Mr. Seager, what do you think?
Oh, that's fine with me.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if if we could have done this in the, in the budget season. But I understand.
This is your salute to Mr. Weaver, sitting in that chair, this is your salute to Mr. Weaver.
The answer is yes, we could have, but I didn't bring it to you during the budget cycle, but.
Probably wasn't thought about until.
We were out there, we were out there on a really cold, dark day, you know, uh, on a twelve hour training plan and, and again, you just, you know, you make it work with headlights and spotlights, but this is, this would make it a much more, down the road, if there's initial, you know, uh, funds, you know, they would, they can enhance the range with, with with power targets, but this would help a lot.
So what's the question?
Just, just whether or not we think this is a good idea to move forward and whether or not to not.
Yeah, that's what, what I was trying to get to is how we're talking about funding it.
Well, you, you either use half, half sheriff's budget, which would transfer to public works and then B O S contingency or just use the whole B O S contingency for the whole thing.
We can do either one, I don't think we're taking money from anybody when we, if, if sheriff, if sheriff looked through there and said, I've got this extra, then he's got that extra.
I just wanted to clarify which of those two we were.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and the only reason I'm asking you now is because I won't be here the next week.
Because what, what I'll do is I'll just put this on the net board's next agenda as a consent item. So, so if I've got some idea of which way the board is, is, is wanting to go, it won't necessarily have to be a, a discussion item next time.
Does, does anybody have, are you splitting it or just us covering?
I think it's good, I think it's a good idea to split it.
We covered, yeah.
But let's just split it right now because they're going to come back to us if they need anything else. Okay, so you got four of us that said.
And it'll come back on, on consent for split.
Thank you very much. We've never told them, no, I hate to say it this way, if they come and ask us for anything, so.
No, this, this, and this is not on the sheriff's department, this is on, uh, the reserved deputies. We just thought it was a need and we could try to get it filled. I kind of know how the system works, so we thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Alrighty, E Children's Services Act semi annual report, Mr. Moller.
Hello again. Hello. Uh, so it's been interesting meeting you so far, before I begin my, begin my presentation, I want to thank the board for, um, uh, following CPNT's recommendations and appointing Cassie, uh, reappointing Cassie to CPN, uh, to the, uh, our CPNT. She's a, again, a great asset, so thank you all very much for that. Uh, that being said, and it's been a long meeting, um, so I'll try to be brief and brilliant, especially because I have, I just found out I have a three year old having a meltdown over not having his train, which is in my car right now. Now, okay, so normally, um, normally either myself or one of my, uh, someone, one of my predecessors used to come to the board in May or June requesting more funding, uh, for the Children's Services Act because by statute, children CSA is insufficient, meaning whatever is approved by CPNT to spend or, uh, to spend, um, has to be covered by, um, blending of state and local funding. So, uh, normally that would be an action item. However, today, uh, wanted to come to let you know that we will not be requesting any additional funding this year. Uh, this is the second year in a row that we've been able to do this. Um, we were, um, normally we, uh, would be, as you can see, we were, um, given three million dollars to spend this year. As of yesterday, we have approximately a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars remaining. We still have a month to go to, uh, for cases to, uh, request funding or whatnot. But on average, a case usually costs about fourteen hundred dollars per month if there, if a new request comes up. So unless I get one hundred requests for, uh, funding just for the month of June, I think we should be okay this year. But also want to go over some of the trends, uh, a couple of the trends with that. So, um, as you can see, this is a, um, a trend in the spending for the past fourteen years. Um, with, uh, with the highest point of spending occurring back in fiscal year seventeen, which was a year prior to becoming, uh, joining the county's, uh, team as a CSA coordinator. Since then, um, through a combination of work with, uh, family assessment and planning team and CPNT, while also looking at, uh, how we can spend our money smarter, not harder, we've been able to steadily decrease that. However, in the past couple of years, we have seen some increases. This is, this correlates pretty closely to, uh, what's happened, um, uh, community as a result of the COVID pandemic that has been occurring since two thousand twenty. Um, this year we are expecting to have higher cost and, uh, higher cost than average, uh, based on the trend. But the good news is that this year we appear to have, um, our spending appears to be relatively flat, which, um, was actually came as a surprise to us because, um, all other indicators of our, we've been spending our, or spending our money would lean more towards us actually going slightly over budget this year. If you know next slide, um, and this just shows, and, and this, uh, just shows a spending trend. It's got, it's got, it's got, it's got some peaks, it's got some valleys, but overall, it's still a relatively, um, flat, um, flat amount or month to month. And this is, uh, goes back from March of twenty twenty one, from the previous fiscal year, um, up to the last, uh, previous month, which ended yesterday. Um, so so, um, why is this, why, why is being flat is a good thing? Well, um, I, I'll go to the next slide. Thanks. So, like I said, all indicators would suggest that we should be spending more money than, uh, we should, or we should be spending more money than, um, we actually did. Our, the amount of money we play for educational day placements, which is when we have to send a child outside the county to be properly educated because their needs exceed what our public school system can provide that child. Had went up about ten, by a long percent, which is about a hundred thousand dollars and a hundred thousand dollar difference. Plus, the number of kids or youth that we've served this year went up by twenty percent. Um, that's been a trend that's been happening in the past couple of years. Back in fiscal year twenty twenty, we were serving approximately sixty five, uh, children. As of this year, uh, we are served about a hundred and seventeen. That's about, that, that's a forty, forty five percent increase. And usually when we see that increase in cases, we will also see a, um, equal increase in spending. This year, we've not seen. Um, what we've been seeing though is the cases that have been coming have been showing, um, need, um, not necessarily a reduced amount of need, but we've been able to target the needs much more, um, surgically. So that, um, we can go in, provide the help that these families need, um, get them to a good place and then be able to, uh, and then be able to pull back. So again, we're working smarter, not harder, which has been sort of like the objective that my office has been trying to pursue, um, for the past few years. Uh, go ahead, next slide. Um, a couple of things to keep in mind though, and, um, there is, this, this, this slide is not a hundred percent accurate now because, um, if you look at the first item or it talks about rate setting for private day schools, this was something that was put into the appropriations act from the general assembly back in twenty twenty. It basically stated that, um, effective July first of this year, the Office of Children's Services, which is the state agency that sort of, uh, supervises and oversees all local CSA programs. Um, they were required to set rates for these private day schools because that's always, that's been the biggest driver of increased costs statewide. Um, this rate set, if this rate setting were to have gone through, we would save money as a program. But, um, any difference between what we could pay a school and what the school would be charging would likely would have to been extracted from our public schools themselves. So we probably would have been, uh, in, in, in a likelihood, as a locality, we probably would have had to end up paying a larger share that we have been in the past few years. Um, there was an item in the state budget this year that would defer that rate setting for one year. So that this year, the account, um, you could go with our, the rates that our, the school would be charging and there wouldn't be any issues with, um, these schools trying to get the difference from our public schools. With, as of right now, the general assembly has adopted the state budget that actually defers this for one year. It was not quite there yet, the governor still has to sign the budget. But if he does sign the budget, then, um, in all indications, point to yes on that one. Then, um, this, that first issue will not be a big, will not be a concern. The second item, however, isn't, it was a concern. And this is from, uh, the House Bill twenty one seventeen from, uh, the general assembly session in back in twenty twenty one. So for years, CSA has always paid for private day placements for the schools, um, which always, um, which always, um, has been a pretty big driver of expenses. About two years ago, the general assembly decided that that funding should no longer be administered by CSA. And, um, the legislation has directed, um, a big task force to figure out a way to redirect that funding to the Department of Education. Now granted, this would cause, this would reduce, um, our programs budget by about thirty five to forty percent. Um, however, um, the question comes up is when this money gets transferred over to the schools, what would be the local match at that point? Um, right now, there is a proposal, um, in the task force, then instead of using the current, um, match rate that's used for CSA, um, CSA services that the, um, comprehensive rate that's currently used, uh, for, um, uh, for local state, um, sharing of school funding be used instead. That actually has a lower match rate than what we're using for CSA. If that was, if that is to go through, and again, they have, the general assembly has to vote on that in, uh, in twenty twenty three. At the locality, we could see an actual increase in, um, local and our, in our local spending on that on average between ninety five to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. So, and considering how much of a, um, shall we say spirited debate, um, funding the schools always tends to be each year during budget season, that's a, that, that's just one more item of, that, one more item of intense discussion that may have to come as a result of this. So, um, yeah, nothing, uh, so, uh, again, I just wanted to make, um, the, the word aware of this, uh, when it comes up in six to seven months. Um, however, there's a little bit of good news as what's happened as always, because, uh, with our program, because we're serving more children, our program has to grow. And we've done some growth this year, uh, one major part that has been using technology again to work smarter, not harder, next slide. So last year, the board supervisors approved funding for, um, for my department to start using Doc Design to use, uh, for a lot of, um, regular, um, normal um, documentation that is used in the CSA, uh, purchase orders, invoices, uh, provider agreements with my vendors. Over the past year, I've been, um, you authorize approximately eighteen hundred and, uh, as of yesterday, we have used approximately two thousand six hundred um, documents that have. um documents that have uh through this. On average, a document, one of those documents takes about fifteen, would in the past, would take about fifteen minutes of uh staffing hours to use, to process, to generate, to process, to um to find people out in the community to uh sign, to mail off to um providers and whatnot. Um now, the whole process takes, on average, maybe on average, forty-five seconds. So you have all saved, as a result of this, about seven hundred staff hours from that. And again, I can, I, I got, I can definitely figure out what to do with two and a half months of my time. Um but because our program is also expanding, the public schools are also going to be adding two new case managers to handle uh their increased caseload, they have been a big force in driving more children uh to uh and families to use us to help uh get their children back onto a really good path where he make happy, helping, safe choices. So um always to see them to be a um um a very uh a more, have an increased stake in the success of our program. Um but remember I said I had that extra time? Well, one issue we've been having statewide is the position that I, that, that this position of CSA coordinator is one that sees a lot of turnover statewide. There are about a hundred thirty of us um in, in a Commonwealth. Each year, we see about fifteen to twenty percent of our, of our um colleagues leave the, uh leave the position. They have new ones come in. So if this keep up, ev- on average, every five years, we should hypothetically have a completely brand-new set of coordinators. That's a big problem in any industry, having that much turnover. So um a colleague of mine and I, um my colleague uh is from the uh Eastern Shore, took a look at this and said, well, what would you do to fix this? So we said, well, you know, what if we took some of these new coordinators and paired them up with some over veteran coordinators, uh basically creating a mentoring program for new coordinators. Um we thought it had legs, um started, uh put, pitched out to some of our, uh our other co- uh peers back in November. And um as of April, we have currently helped about twenty-five mentors so far, our new coordinators so far. Uh have mentors stay in the job and uh feel much more comfortable in that. Um the hope is that in doing so, this is going to we uh reduce our turnover rate from our current fifteen to our tw- I said fifteen, twenty, so actually higher, twenty to thirty percent. We're hoping to get down to like five percent every year, and that's just for, and that, we hope that's when people retire. So um again, your, your, your support of um this program has been making um an impact on a state level. So thank you all very much for that. Um that being said, um do everyone have any questions about the program or anything that's happened in the past year?
Any?
The only thing I'll say I like to end to this one better than the other one, because the last time you said I'm gonna have to come back and ask for my money. That's the first time you've done, done that in a couple of years. So I'm glad that you didn't have to, but thank you.
You and me both. Thank you for your time.
Next up, F, Pleasant Grove Park Light Poles Fixtures, donation from UVA, Mr. Spitzer.
You had been donated. All right. Good evening. How y'all doing this evening? So I'm here, I, I'm here to talk about a possible donation to Flavanna County from UVA that I was approached about. Um I've been, you can go to the next. So I was work, I've been working with Musco Lighting, um because I'm working on getting the soccer fields lit, coming up, and one of the ball fields lit. I'll explain that here in a minute. So during their conversations, UVA is taking down two light poles and putting a building up in an area, and they have no use for these light poles. So they knew we were doing a project and didn't know if we wanted to take a donation for the light poles. So each light pole is worth about thirty-five thousand dollars, so it'd be about a seventy thousand dollar donation we would get. But as you'll see here in a minute, it's gonna cost some money to continue with the donation. Um we would have to put in cat precast pole for the poles in the ground, which are five thousand dollars apiece. Um we gotta connect the fixtures to to the power to get them to run in. That's gonna depend on what we would have to do, that'd be between twenty and forty thousand dollars. So the cost to get the lights up and running would be about a fifty thousand dollar cost, no more. But if we were to do this without the donation, then go ahead and add, you know, seventy thousand dollars, so it'd be a hundred and twenty thousand dollar cost that we would ensue. Um in my presentation, I previously asked to put them at the rodeo field at Pleasant Grove, but well, met with Musco today. We have a new plan. I like to put them in the soccer parking lot, because we will have an issue if we have lights out there with no issue, with no lights in a parking area. So we are gonna have an issue with lighting up our parking area at night anyway, moving forward. So this would help alleviate that um with, with this donation. Um this slide kind of shows you where the poles would be, so the, I, I, I should have used different colors, and I'm sorry about that. The X is where I was proposing to put the light towers. Actually, they'd be kind of over in that area right there. Um the soccer field will take two, four, six, eight, ten light poles to light up. Um the softball field would take four. The baseball field would take, I think it's eight, right? Six or eight? Um so with funding that we have to do the project, to light all those three fields, it'd be one point one million dollars, and we have six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the project. It's kind of where we are. The baseball field hardly ever gets used, so that's why that won't be lit up at this time. Um I would like to light up the fields that I get you use the most, and we would have the most use out of them. So that's why this diagram is kind of there, to see what we would be lighting up as we move along. Um these are what the poles will look like. They're all twelve illuminates. Um if we move them to the parking lot, we might be able to take a couple illuminates off to decrease how much power is being used because of the parking lot doesn't need as much. Um those are all things we were kind of discussing today. Is there any questions that I can try to answer?
I guess my, my question would be, is there gonna be any, you don't think there'll be enough residual lighting from the soccer fields to?
So these will be two different type of lights that'll be out there. The lights that we will be getting donated are illuminated lights. The lights we will be getting for the soccer field and the ba- and the softball field will be LED lights. LED lights shine straight down, basically, and they have a box around them, so they don't show any illumination outside of like your area that you're actually illuminating. As these lights project the high up and across, not down, so they will project lights out. So there will be a, two different types of lights out there if we do accept this donation. But they are not making these lights anymore. These, like poles, they be, they still make the bulbs and stuff to fix them, but they're all going to LEDs.
Yeah, we, like I said, we, we know this is a, a, a big request, and again, it came up at the last minute. It's not, it's not on the budget. It wasn't even contemplated. Again, just Musco.
They just contacted me and asked me if we wanted a donation of two light towers, and they knew we were doing a project to try to help the county. Kind of save a little money in the long run, but it does cost, you know, it's not a free donation. It's not.
Yeah, i- it's like when you uh, there, there's a, you want to buy something for a hundred bucks, but it's uh, there's a fifty percent off sale, but do you, do you need it? Well, you know, do you spend the fifty bucks to do it or not? I mean, but granted, this is way more than fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Have there been any?
Correct me if I'm wrong. Ultimately, to the plan that we had in place, because we did not, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we did have plans to light the parking lot, right?
No, no, there were no plans to light the parking lot at this point.
This will, no matter how you shake it, this is in, this is in addition to the cost of that project.
It is. I, I mean, again, originally, the six eighty-five that the board approved last fiscal year, at that point, was
To light the three fields.
To light all three fields now.
Five.
Well, yes, the three soccer and then the two ball fields. Well, now that six eighty-five doesn't light all those fields.
How much is left over from the six eighty-five when you don't do the baseball?
Nothing, the six eighty-five.
The six eighty-five would put it to a million one almost to light the baseball fields. So we're asking another three hundred thousand dollars or more, three fifty to light the baseball.
Wondering if, because you didn't do the baseball field, there might be fifty thousand dollars left over there.
No, I would like the baseball field, but our, with the funding that was given to me with the request and the price, everything went up, we just didn't have enough money to do all three. So we get the most uses out of our soccer field and our softball field is why I would choose those areas to light up and not the ba- the baseball field never gets, hardly ever gets played on at all. We would use softball out there. That's why I'm getting ready to buy these pitching mounds to take the mounds out, so we can use that field as a softball field for warmups or something, you know what I'm saying? It just doesn't get used. I'm a huge baseball person, and I, it hurts me not to light a baseball field up, but it doesn't get used, and I think it's a, it would not benefit the county to light that field up at this time with the, the amount of kids we have using.
A- a- and you know, the one thing we, while I was talking to Mr. Spitzer, I'm like, well, is there any way that, you know, just when we were talking with the lights, is, is there any way that these lights would be able to offset, you know, what was being done elsewhere, but you know, him, you know, kind of talking with the lighting thing, you know, you don't want to really mix these type of other non-LED lights with LED lights, and then, you know, you're kind of in the same field, so.
And if there is a better place that you know of for the ca- these lights to go into Flavanna County, I'm okay with that, too. You know, it's a donation to Flavanna County, not to Parks and Recreation.
Have there been any safety incidents in the parking lot?
We're not open at dark. We're, we're closed dawn to dusk, so when we get the lights in, and I'm hoping it starts in January, we get the lights in by January, then we will have an issue where we're opening it at dark. Uh y'all recently approved in the budget for me two gates to close off towards the house, behind the house, and towards the garden. So I'll be able to close off and that off at night, just send everybody down towards the soccer fields. But there's no lighting inside, actually, the main road into the park to get back there, so it will be dark until you get back that way.
Knowing how the traffic flows out of there, would you anticipate that if it was, if it was not lit, that you would have potential safety incidents?
Well, yeah, because you would have kids running around everywhere in the dark area with the headlight of a car coming, and let's say they didn't even turn their headlights on yet when they pulled out, and they, you know, clip a kid. So there is going to be some issues. I mean, I also have some money in the CIP to put a fence up. So when we do that, I'm hoping to maybe be able to move parking around a little bit for handicap accessibility closer to the fields and stuff. But there's, I mean, there's issues with people driving back there and kids running around.
The only other place I thought about in the county you could do that, and I'm not sure if they've looked into doing it yet or not, is, I know I could call Coach Carter, he could tell me, the football field middle school. Those lights are.
Theirs are not the same type of lights, I don't believe, at the middle school. These are, these lights are like the ones at the high school. These lights, these are the high school lights.
Yeah, I, I got you.
So they would look different if you, but it is what it is.
Something better than nothing.
Yes, it is.
And right now, we got two poles over there that if you go to light them up, I remember when I was a young coach, we would all rock, paper, scissors on who was gonna cut the lights on or off.
See if you got shocked.
Exactly.
I've been over there. So like I said, it's a donation to Flavanna County, not to Parks and Recreation. We, Musco just thought, as we were doing our lighting project, this could help the county out a little bit as we were doing that project as well.
Go back to your last picture, and the only thing I thought about with the parking lot is if you tilt, put one over in that corner and tilted it's where
We have a tree line?
Will cover the pl- uh playground as well.
Well, so I'm thinking about that, with one light?
Playground.
With one light up top, I was thinking about reaching over to cover.
Put it right over there at the tree line.
And then I have to have another one on the bottom side of the tree line because of the tree line would block the illuminates.
Come down here at the bottom.
Yep, so I have to have, the, we will actually kind of have to have two lights over there to, to light the whole parking lot.
Add a whole new experience to the handicap line. Upset.
I mean, to me, in the original plan and design, these weren't included. And I don't want to look a gift horse, but it's a, this is an additional cost. It's, it's not, there's nothing, it's, it's just less than what it, what it would have cost to quote-unquote add this in to the overall plan, and now we're, to me, if we're looking for somewhere that we can place it and make use, we're really looking to spend money that we otherwise may not need to.
Yeah, well, my, my one question to that.
You.
How long is it gonna be before they're gonna come back and ask us for parking lot?
You're gonna need lights at the parking lot sooner or later.
Right, I mean, if it, if it, if it's an identifiable uh security issue down the road, um and it wasn't thought about, well, you know, then uh just as we saw in the delay, because I think you've been requesting lights for the fields for the last seven or eight years. Um I'm sure when we started seven years ago, the price was probably four hundred thousand dollars.
That was before I started, yeah, so I kinda had.
I mean, every, every year we wait, the price goes up, and you know, if, if we're gonna put the lights, the lights in in the next year, year and a half, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna have to put in lights for the, for the, for the parking lot area, well, it's gonna cost us probably triple of what it would cost us right now. So, yeah, it is more than what was budgeted, but if it's ultimately the need, it is less than what we will pay.
And I, I'll be honest with you, the parking light issue didn't come up till this morning, and uh the three of us were out there looking at it, and we're like, you know, what are we gonna do with these people parking over there? It really wasn't thought about when we were just trying to light the fields, you know? Experience, that's what you get when you do something and you learn, I reckon, right?
Well, I think you're, you know, the shadows, when you're, you're right, in the dark, when you have the shadows that are worn by the headlights and car moving in and out, kids moving there. That's, that's more challenging, for sure.
So you, yeah, we'll have to light it up, I think, somehow.
And having been hit at, hit by a car when I was a young man, it was not.
I would know what's wrong.
It was a police car, too.
Um but, but you know, when we talk about Tony, I hear what you're saying about it will only cost more at another time. There's a lot of things we want to do at Pleasant Grove, so let's just do it all now, and I don't mean it sarcastically, but um you know, everything we want to do there in the future will cost more then than it will now. And so and I, I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just saying that, I understand, it's, it's money that, you know, we, 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 just another piece of money that we weren't budgeted, it wasn't budgeted, and we're
I get it.
Discussing, but what if, is there any requirement that they get installed now?
No, well, I'd have to find it somewhere to store them, and then you don't really want to lay them on the ground, per se, for months on an end, you know what I'm saying?
And we'd pick the place to put them for ten thousand dollars. We could stand them up and just not hook the electricity.
And then, yeah, I wasn't hooking the electricity up till I came and did it with the rest of the lighting.
Because, yeah, I mean, he's not planning on doing this whole lighting project until, when you say fall.
I'm trying to hook, like, if I was gonna use these two light poles, I was gonna do all the hookups at one time. So they would be, you know, November to the, to January is when.
Can we go back at the numbers?
Yeah.
So our, our our cost at this time right now would be ten thousand bucks.
No, it's, it's.
Well, to get them standing up.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yep.
And then the fif- the fifty, but or the other forty is, that's worst-case scenario if we gotta put in another panel box.
Can, well, yes, we're trying to hook, we will try to hook these up to a panel box we're gonna put in for the new lights.
That's what I'm saying.
Try to be able to use the same one.
It could reduce the price, yes.
That, that, that's what I read down here, but ten thousand bucks.
And with us, I think, moving the, the lights from where I thought being the carnival field down to the parking lot area, that will save, I think, on a little bit of conduit and stuff and electric, you know, how far we have to run it, really.
Well, again, we're, we're almost at the end of the year. We have ninety-three thousand dollars minus six, three thousand, so we have ninety thousand dollars left in the board contingency. Um we're probably not likely to spend that. So um, you know, you could say it's not budgeted, but we budget the board contingency for opportunities and or, you know, things that don't go the way we plan. Um uh so I mean, I, I, I'm, again, if I'm looking down the road and saying I'm gonna spend fifty thousand dollars more just by default and having to purchase these, because the other costs are fixed, then this is a fifty thousand dollar savings to the county.
If, if, what I would maybe say is, i- if the board says we want to move forward with this, what I would probably recommend is, is, is if you use, if you wanted to use BOs contingency, take the fifty thousand out of BOs contingency and put it into the CIP project. That's kind of outstanding for the whole lighting thing, so the money is just kind of there. So once, for one, the ten thousand would be there to do the, the install of, of the precast to get them up, and then once, once the whole project kind of gets going for the, for the installation, then the funds are there to kind of add to, add to the remaining piece of it.
And if the installation turns out to be six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars because of the number of lights that we select, then, you know, okay, we're, you know, we're back to where we were.
Um two quick questions. Do we know how old the poles are? And how long are supposed to last?
They're relatively new. I do not know the exact age, and twenty years. twenty years, they're twenty, I think they're, I think they're a twenty year pole, I think is what the school asks, twenty, twenty-five years is their life expectancy. And I think these are within the last five to ten years they were put up. I would say within the last five, I think is what I can't be, I can't guarantee that though, but I think that's what I was.
We could find that information.
I may have.
Of it costs us nothing. That part of it costs us nothing. And if something happens to them ten years, fifteen years from now, and we want to replace them, we already got the bases there. We just replace them.
You'll have to get LED lights moving.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm saying.
Yeah, the electrical work.
Correct. The, the electrical work will already be done.
Don't.
I don't think I would turn this deal down after what you said, that we do have some, it could move both. Someone's giving you.
Did you say you would turn it?
No, no, I wouldn't.
Miss Eager.
Well, I guess we're going to need the lighting there in that area sometime. And
I think that's going to end up and heaven forbid, we don't want it to be after something happens and then we become reactive.
Yeah.
And say, oh darn, we wish we should have, we should have put some lights up.
Would it be possible to, um, get poles and install them and then not hook them up?
Correct. That's what we're just talking about. And we'll have to check on that about do they have to have the wiring already done when they put them up?
They do not. No.
Mister, where are you at?
Yeah, I mean, I, I see both sides, but I, I can, I can look forward.
All right. Let's move forward.
So, so do you want me to put, is there any reason you'd want it on action or would you put it up, put it under consent?
Put it under consent.
And then I'll use.
So I'll let them know that we'll be able to take it. All right. Thank you.
Then tell them thank you very much. Thanks for thanking us. That's, that's good. I'm sure you did. Yes, sir. All right. Gee, noise control ordinance amendment discussion. Major Wells.
Chairman, let me give you a legal background of this.
Yeah, I was trying to read that.
You saw in the, in the stamp report, this regime was adopted in two thousand one. And in two thousand nine, Supreme Court played a little trick on, on, on their localities. And basically if it, if it had been before, they would probably have been invalidated our, our scheme. Objection the Supreme Court had was to the Virginia Beach ordinance was that it was too subjective. So we answered that by saying, well, we'll get a, a true scientific measure of this. And the scientific measure would be the, um, sound meters. Um, the, I'm confident that the sound meters would satisfy the data, the head holding of the Tanner case. Problem was, problem is, and Major Wilson will tell you all about this, they don't work right there. And it's not, it's not that we don't have the right meters or anything. It's that the conditions have to be set up to use them in such a way that it's not practical to use them for enforcement. The other thing is, as we tell you, the magistrate's gotten kind of picky about them. And they look at this ordinance and say, why don't you bring the, the meters in? What we're asking for is for your head nods to go ahead with, with drafting some regulations. I haven't drafted this ordinance yet. But my contemplation is that we're going to use Loudoun County as, as the primary example. And apparently it, it's been enforced for some time. Has never been, I don't think there have been successful challenge. So that recommends that, but we didn't want to do that, didn't want to spend any time on it until you give us.
Yeah, what he said. Now essentially, as it is on the books, it's unenforceable. If you read the entirety of the code, it talks about the sound meter setup in accordance with the national, I forget the name of the associations thing, was that's you have to be four foot from the ground approximately X amount of yards from the house. You have to have five minutes of no sound, a five minute continuous sound reading. And obviously if someone's having a late night party, we can't really get over there, pull out a tripod or laser measuring device. Okay, turn it down. Let me get a pre-sound reading. Okay, now turn it back where you had it for five hundred and over minutes. And not to mention that the citizen has a complaint and we get there and it's already off, they can't commit a warrant because what the magistrate's told them multiple times is where the sound readings. The codes, it's a very lengthy code. That's just not practical to enforce. So we're trying to find some other options for, I've been bugging it for a couple of years now to try to find something that we can at least take some action. And people know it's unenforceable, so they basically tell us to, you know, what are you going to do? Yeah.
So what is a, do you, like, in Loudon's case, what is the gist of it that would make it? What is the big change?
It takes away some of the subjective criteria.
And it takes away, there's no sound meter.
Where's the Virginia, in the Virginia Beach case, were things like unreasonable and, um,
Yeah, it was just very vague. Basically it is disturb the quietude of the neighborhood, which is a subjective term. And Loudon's basically says if it can be heard in the household after eleven o'clock, that's probably not right. There's a enumerated list of things on that, uh, like gunfire, some of the things are explicitly excluded, but I believe it does talk about dogs. Um, I sent them a couple of drafts and we're just trying to find something. We get a lot of complaints and people complain and went, go, uh, sorry, there's nothing I can do. They get mad. And I understand that you're trying to sleep and there's somebody out there revving their engine, working the car, having a loud party.
Shooting guns at two AM.
Correct. Well, the New Year's Eve does not count.
Right. And, and you, there's a couple of different versions I found. We can put into it, you know, I have to be given a warning first, or it could be a a civil penalty and it does go to criminal until after like your third offense in a year. So we're not trying to be draconian by any means. We just want to keep the peace, basically.
It's come up in part because of that Scottsville.
One of many recent, yes.
But just so others know, if you didn't know, um, there's a neighborhood in this, in the Cunningham district where there's a neighbor who has got everybody else's attention, including beyond midnight in, in different ways, um, and Eric was, Sheriff House was good enough to come over and have a community meeting. And the gist of it was that they really didn't have a way to try to, they, they had very little way to try to enforce or want to stop this from happening. And so it sounds like to me this is an effort to.
It is. That's what sparked my latest series of emails. Um, one draft I sent them, didn't explicitly talk about no, for lack of a better term, recreational gunfire between these hours. It's different if it's, you know, for you're hunting coyotes at night or for self-defense purposes, but no more. It's midnight.
Well, I won't even say she's skee, but somebody goes out there with thirty round flip and just unloads it.
Right, at two in the morning. Yeah, and on a habitual basis. That's what we're looking for, habitual problems. Or people who, you know, when we knock on the door and we go, can you please just quiet it down, say, nope, and just keep going. So we're just trying to fix a problem and the best way we can to keep the citizens at least kind of happy.
So the question is if we want some sort of draft, is that right?
We, I mean, what, what we would, what we propose is going through and bringing a draft to the board and just, we didn't want to get any staff time going on if the board's like, well, no, we're happy with where, where things are right now.
We need to. I want to use the existing ordinance to the extent that we can. But we're going to make, we're, we're going to do some serious cutting. But, uh, exactly where we change it, how we, how we change it. Something that Major Wells and I are going to have to talk to.
And we have to have a public hearing, Mommy?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's an ordinance change, yeah.
Oh, it's, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'd like to say I'm really, um, it's a good thing that agriculture is not considered because if you've ever heard a cow who can't find her calf, that is one loud noise.
We were aware of that.
The one thing gets me is with the dogs parking. I mean, I know it's, if you're close, but like in my house, I'll have coyotes come in my yard.
Right.
Yeah.
And the dogs start raising cane, I know when there's a coyote.
Yeah, well, and, and the intent again is to craft it in a way for the knowing habitual nuances is not the, let's say nuances of living in a rural environment, if you will. The ones who are just being problematic because they can.
The chances are if he sends an officer out there, the officer says, would you tone it down? And the person says,
Up yours.
Not going to do it. And the officer has the authority to issue summons as opposed to going to the magistrate and getting warned. That's going to be a big deterrent. Because people don't want to show up.
Yeah, I mean, it's against.
I, I'm going to have a bunch of questions once we get it, so I probably better.
Well, if you have questions, I'd appreciate having.
Well.
No, I don't mean that. No, if you've got things you want, your question about what ought to be addressed.
Like you said, it's with a public hearing.
Yeah, people will hear about it. And Loudon ordinance explicitly talks about agricultural, uh, farm, and then generators. Uh, and again, you're trying to set some quiet hours for basic, for lack of a better term, civil living.
So I get head nods to move forward?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. H minutes of May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, pers- personal policy update, personnel policy update, uh, Ms. Snow. J F Y twenty-two Circuit Court Preservation Funds Supplemental Appropriations, Ms. Milton. K F Y twenty-two A R P A Municipal Utility Funds Supplemental Appropriation, Ms. Milton. L F Y twenty-two CARES Act Supplemental Appro- Appropriation, Ms. Milton. M F Y twenty-two fifty-one Kent Store Way Insurance Claim, Ms. Milton. And F Y twenty-two Department of Social Services Share of the Cost Allocation Funds, Ms. Milton. Angle, look, uh, do, uh, have anything that we want to pull? Do y'all have anything you want to pull? Do I have a motion? So maybe. Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Is there any unfinished business?
But I, I just want to say thanks to, um, Eric for on Friday sending that email about my questions about personal property. And to me, it's worth the time to go through with taxpayers that are still asking questions and confused and uh, so on your time, on his time off Friday, said that in the evening. And, um, but I was also relieved to know that you didn't know either, really beating what I kept trying to think of, how would you set where that number is and how would you?
I mean, that's, that's the thing. It, it, it would almost be impossible. I mean, to make every citizen whole. I mean, to make every citizen whole. Kind of what I said is you'd have to find out what was the largest increase in vehicle value and make that as the baseline and then then make the equalized rate based on that. And then everyone below that, I mean, they're going to either have, they're going to be flat or they're going to have a decrease. So you know, again, if you just, i- i- if the commissioner were to say, well, overall in the county were, uh, you know, sixteen and a half percent increase, well, that's just kind of taking everything overall. You know, within there, there's going to be someone that's thirty percent and someone that's ten percent. So there's just not an, and in the same way, when we do equalization too, everyone's property, when we do the equalization, everyone's property is appreciate, mostly appreciate, um.
Area is different.
Yeah.
The two times ago, it was Kent Store that went up really high and this past time it was the lake.
Yeah. And ju- just, just like, just like I showed you for, for my, for my two vehicles, I mean, they were, you know, one year they were one vehicle decreased, one increased a little bit. And then the next year they, they both increased at different levels. So again, you know, I, I am certainly, I certainly feel for those residents that maybe got a little surprised in their personal property tax rate, but from the county standpoint, I, I think the board did a, did a lot to, to try and try and take that into account that they were going to see something. And, and so you know, it would have been great if we could have made it all whole, but, but I think that would have been a pretty, that would have been a pretty I would think that would have been a pretty expensive task to do that.
How many, um, concerns do you think we had?
I was sat in the commissioner's, I went. Personal property taxes today and ended up sitting in there for about forty-five minutes. Sitting there, they had at least ten phone calls while I was sitting there, at least ten. And it's quiet. It hadn't quieted down totally, but it's less now than it was. When it first came out, it was as soon as they hung the phone up, they were on the phone.
Not, not really understood.
Well, one thing I can tell you too is, what was it? We went down seven, sixty-five cents out of four thirty-five. So what is that, about seventeen percent?
It was a fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent decrease that we had that, and you know, we, like you said, you made a great point with the different vehicles. You can't make it perfect. I believe Mel came in here and said like three ten would have been quote unquote, an equalized rate, but.
But again, that's, that's not, everyone's going to see.
Yeah. And, and you know, it's just.
Well, I guess we need to be, do, if this happens again, maybe just need to do a better job of informing the citizens in some way.
I can, there's no, no way you're going to satisfy somebody.
I know that. At least let's try.
Challenge was that it's very hard for a citizen to understand that a car that he purchased two years ago is now more expensive than when he bought it. I mean, that's, well, we don't control that.
I'll tell you this much, y'all know I had the wreck. My vehicle was four years old. They eventually came back and said it's worth exactly what you paid for after being, after I've driven it for four years plus.
It's, it's kind of that I, I agree with Mozzell, that I don't think this is going to come about next year. I think it's going to be some different time.
We may have to raise it next year.
We don't know. But, but I think if it was to happen again, I do feel we should communicate. And then I'd just say that it made me feel better because if a guy that is educated and has worked in government finance didn't have a better solution than that, I I wasn't going to either.
I can only tell you this much, I would hate to have been sitting in the other commissioners' offices. That never went down. Because.
There's, there's, I think there's probably a good amount of them too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And like I said, the board, I like said, I think the board did a good thing by, by both decreasing the personal property and the real estate. So, you know.
But we did not re-decrease real estate. We were one tenth of a penny from the equalized rate.
Well, it's not a reassessment year.
Exactly. But yeah, I mean, we went down, what was it? One point four? Cent?
Yep.
Alrighty. Is there any new business? Hearing none, I will now open the second round of public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address. Keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Is there anyone which to speak at this time? Anybody online? Alrighty, I will now close the second round of public comment. Mr. O'Brien.
Chair, I'm with Savannah County Board Supervisors entering to oppose many pursuant provisions of section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A three, section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A five, section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven, section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A nineteen of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty for the purposes of discussing personnel, county administrators, performance evaluation, employee performance matters, real estate, disposition of county-owned property, prospective industry, prospective business, litigation, actual litigation in connection with Quigley Properties LLC, Public Safety EMS Service.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. We'll see y'all in the morning.
Thank you.
When I need to.
Okay.
Like we all said.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Chair, the closed meeting be adjourned if the county board of supervisors convene again in a session. Here is all the board supervisors thus hereby certified to the best of each member's knowledge. One only public business matters lawfully exempted from open here in the center section two dot two that. Thirty seven eleven A of the code of G N nineteen fifty is amended in two. Only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closing was convened were heard discussed or considered in the beginning.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Eager. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Ms. Fairchild? Mr. O'Brien, chair votes aye. We're now in a closed session. I have a motion to extend till ten o'clock.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passed five zero. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some lose.
Some lose.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker.